October 15th, Planning Commission meeting. Thank you all for making time to come out and join us for this conversation. It promises to be very informative and interesting. We'll start with the declaration and a roll call, please. Jenna.
Thank you, Chair Munoz-Morris. Community Development Director Jennifer Carmen.
Present.
Assistant City Attorney Cynthia Hassan.
Here.
Chair Munoz-Morris.
Present.
Commissioners Gonzalez Escado.
Here.
Habim.
Here.
Mohler.
Here.
Tonda.
Here.
Kumar.
Here.
And Downey.
Here.
If I may also declare the posting. Tonight's meeting agenda is duly noted and posted in accordance with Government Code Section 549, 54.2.
Thank you very much. And it's not on my agenda, but we'll go ahead and do a pledge of allegiance since we normally do. So Commissioner Downey, would you mind leading us, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And with that, we'll jump into items of the day. We only have one item today, but before we dive into it, we normally have an open public comment period for anybody that wishes to speak on any matter not on the agenda tonight. So Jenna, do we have any speaker cards?
I think they're all here for...
They're all for the item. Does anybody want to wish to... Does anybody wish to speak on anything other than the item we have on the agenda tonight? This will be the time to either raise your hand or step forward. Seeing that nobody is rushing forward, we'll go ahead and close the open comment period. And we'll start with our main item of the evening. Before we dive into presentations and et cetera, we do have a couple of announcements we'd like to make, so I'll first start with Cynthia.
Okay. So I just wanted to mention, this public hearing is an opportunity for the applicant to receive preliminary input from the Planning Commission on the proposed plan development project. The Planning Commission will provide preliminary input only on the project compliance with findings required for approval of a planned development project set forth in the Morgan Hill Municipal Code. Planning Commission input is not a recommendation for approval or denial of the project. Any recommendation to the applicant is advisory only and is not binding on the applicant or the city. No decision will be made tonight on the project. I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that, that tonight is just an advisory public hearing meeting. And please keep in mind that the Planning Commission cannot commit to a specific position on the project without the potential from being conflicted out in the future. So I'm not going to come out and say, "I'm opposed to the project," or "I'm in favor of the project," because that is not an appropriate time for this. This is just to discuss what is before them tonight, the various proposed elements of the project. And that would conclude my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Yeah, so essentially, we are looking to... The city, I should say, is looking for both the commission's feedback as well as the public feedback. We'll try to ask questions and clarify any issues or concerns that are either brought up by the public or that commissioners have related to the presentation and to the information that we have. But anybody up here in the commission, just remember that stating a formal position could preclude us from actually voting on this in the future. So with that in mind, I just wanted to kind of go over some... Just some quick house rules as far as the comments. We anticipate there's going to be a large volume of you commenting tonight. Our standard time for comments, for public comments, is three minutes. You will notice up here by the microphone, there's like a little stoplight. Green obviously means go. Yellow means you roughly have about 30 seconds. And we are going to ask, in the interest of fairness, so that everybody can speak and everybody has a chance tonight, that when you see that light turn red, you please wrap up your thoughts. And with that, we'll move to the next person. For some of you who may wish to have your voice heard but don't feel necessarily as comfortable speaking, you are welcome to donate your time to somebody. If you're here in a group and you want to give a few more minutes to somebody who may have a longer statement prepared, we'd be happy to do that. We just want to kind of manage time appropriately, so please let us know when your name is called, so that we can go ahead and allocate that time properly. Most importantly, please refrain from either cheering or especially and particularly booing. We bring this up. It happened just recently at one of our other meetings. We understand that pretty much none of you are left indifferent by the topic tonight, but we do ask that you please be respectful of everybody's opinion and everybody's statement, whether you agree or disagree with it. We have been encouraging the audience, if you are in strong agreement with what is being said and you want to express us, please just kind of raise your hand rather than create more noise and a distraction. And to that point, please, if you could be mindful of any conversation within the chambers, even if it is kind of quiet off to the sides, sound travels very well in here, so it can become a bit of a distraction either for the speakers, the commissioner, or for the rest of the audience listening. And I think with that, we will get started. So just to give you an idea of what we're... The process tonight, we will start with a staff presentation. Commission may choose to ask some questions at that point of city staff. From there, we traditionally start with the applicant as far as the comments. And the applicants traditionally get a little bit of extra time just so that they can present their information, and we can get kind of a thorough presentation from them. Again, we might have some questions at that point, and then we will dive into the public comment. So I hope that everybody's okay with that, and we can all agree to kind of have a civil conversation. I certainly am looking forward to it. So why don't we go ahead and get started, Jennifer?
All right. Thank you. So tonight, we're here to talk about SR 2019-29. This is a preliminary review hearing, and I had a slide on... And this does not want to work. Okay. So I have to turn my back to all of you in order to make this work. All right. So the purpose of tonight's meeting, our Assistant City Attorney went over this. The preliminary review hearing is required for any plan development district. And so it provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission to give initial feedback, ask questions, provide comments on things they would like to see when the project comes for an actual recommendation. This application is for two things. One, a general plan amendment to adjust the boundaries between the commercial and commercial industrial land use designations on this particular lot. They essentially want to take this portion and move it forward, which I'm not... This is not working either. So you can see from the two, from existing to proposed, that it does change land use designations. The zoning amendment, and I'm using the same graphics we used at the committee meeting because a lot of people are familiar with those. You can also see from existing zoning, you have two existing PDs. One on the commercial... On the highway commercial portion, the red, and one on the industrial portion, the gray. And in coordination with the general plan amendment, they want to pull that forward, all the gray up to the red portion. These PDs already exist. They are empty at this moment. So the conceptual plan for this project is anywhere from 50,000 to 75,000 square feet of commercial on that red portion, and then four separate lots of 1.06 million square feet total of flexible industrial, commercial uses, including advanced manufacturing, warehouse distribution, supporting office in similar industrial and commercial uses. And we list the preliminary sizes of the lots on this slide. Lots two and three are proposed to contain 100% industrial uses. They're also asking as part of the PD, a maximum height of 55 feet at the parapet, and then 90 feet for mechanical or telecommunications equipment. We'll get more into that as I move forward. So this is the conceptual plan. A lot of you have already seen this as part of the EIR. So for plan development zoning, the combining districts that I referred to earlier were put into place on the commercial lots, the red, in 1991, and on the industrial lots in 2001. Creating a PD enables customized zoning for a site. You're basically taking the zoning ordinance and taking out bits and changing it and putting it on the site. This city has hundreds of PDs all over the city. If you pull up our zoning map, you will see the customized zoning done across the city since the city's been a city. We do have PDs existing all the way back to '30s, '40s, '50s. So PD zoning allows for flexibility in design, flexibility in land use. It allows creativity, hopefully innovation and development concepts. That is the goal of our PD zoning. The proposed PD allows a project... Well, the PD zoning allows a project to deviate from the development standards in the base zoning district, except for floor area ratio. In this particular instance, the building height is being requested to allow the parapet height up to 55 feet and two cell towers up to 90 feet within the industrial portion of the site. The base zoning in the industrial districts typically allows 50 feet in height. Height exceptions for roof elements are allowed between 10 and 12 feet, meaning that with the base zoning, you could see parapet height of 60 to 62 feet. This particular project is asking for 55. The buildings proposed now are at 41 feet. They're also asking for some deviations in parking standards to accommodate truck-trailer storage, and also a 10-foot screening wall. The maximum floor area ratio for the proposed development would be less than .45, and an FAR of .60 is allowed. And I'm just showing one picture from their site plans that show the proposed height of the building, showing the 55. They propose 41 height, 36 clear ceiling height within the building. So the next step of a PD is the land use regulations. The regulations in the PD can deviate from the land use regulations of the zoning district. However, they need to be consistent with the general plan. These are all the commercial uses allowed in our code. And I know it's difficult to read, but I wanted for everyone to get a sense of what is allowed in our commercial districts. This is what they're proposing. It's the same list, just everything's deleted that they are not proposing. These are the industrial uses allowed in our zoning ordinance. This is what they're proposing. And they also are including some additional issues... Additional uses, I should say, and refined uses proposed as part of their use list. These are all in attachments that you received as part of the staff report. So where we allow food and beverage production, the applicant has requested that they have specifics, whether it's beverage, bread and bakery, fruit and vegetables, other specialty food products. They've included equipment sales and rentals as a use, technology, administrative sales and engineering, multimedia services. I won't go through the whole list, but they also look at warehousing and distribution. And part of their proposal is to change the definition of what is small and what is large, going from 75,000 to 300,000. So refining the use definitions within the PD. And this is part... This is one of the integral parts of creating a plan development zoning. This is our existing definition of warehousing and distribution. It's very broad. It's very vague. It enables a lot of interpretation. And so one of the things that they have proposed as part of their application is increasing what large and small would be, going from 75 to 300, as I had said before. And then we have this outdoor storage piece at the bottom. One of the questions tonight for the commission is to talk about is to get input on whether or not this definition's appropriate for this particular PD. Should this definition be refined? Should it be split apart? Should things that are in there, like the cooperative marketing of farm products and bottling works, is that appropriate for the uses that they proposed? Should particular uses of concern, such as a fulfillment center, be independently defined? Our zoning ordinance does not define fulfillment center at this time. Should it be regulated differently than warehouse and distribution and/or prohibited? Should the definition of warehousing and distribution be broken up into different types? Freestanding, ancillary. Manufacturing business may have a warehouse and do distribution, but a freestanding distribution center functions very differently. And that is one place where we'd like the commission's input on what you'd like to see in the future. Different uses... Different types of uses could also have square footages that govern the type of permit required for such a use. We have three different types of permitting: permitted by right, administrative use permits, and conditional use permits. And conditional use permits come to the Planning Commission. Part of establishing a PD is also providing substantial public benefits to the city. One of the findings that would have to be made by both the Planning Commission and the City Council is a determination of whether the project provides a substantial public benefit. And we have included examples of those public benefits as part of your packet. So that public benefit is defined as a project feature, not otherwise required, that benefits the community and exceeds our minimum development standards. A project must include one or more substantial benefits in order to be rezoned as plan development. Now, this already is a plan development on two portions of the lot. They're just shells, but that is an interesting complication that we have, because if there's nothing there, what's the public benefit? Applicant supporting statement in attachment one includes a lot of examples of public benefits the project could convey. The City Council shall determine whether or not the public benefit recommended justifies the deviation from the standards that they're asking for, and whether or not... From the standards of the zoning districts that currently apply to the property. So that is my initial presentation on the PD. I also have plans. There are conceptual plans, if you'd like to see them. They're very large, and they may be a little bit slow, but I can walk through those as well.
Jennifer, by any chance, do you also have handy the... One of our emails that we received, we had the actual definition of public benefit, and I think it'd be worthwhile to throw it up. Not necessarily right now, but maybe during conversation and questions, just so that we have it fresh?
Sure. I can pull that up. Let's see, where are we?
All right. As Jennifer gets set up...
Right about that.
That's fine. Commissioners, I imagine we have some questions in the room?
I have a question.
Would you like to get started? Liam?
Wait until she has...
Yeah, of course.
So these are the plans for the entire site. This is what I showed you in the PowerPoint. This is the original conceptual plan. These are our grading studies. More of the conceptual planning. And then there's a landscape plan at the end. There aren't significant renderings. They're all broken up in the individual buildings, which I'll pull up next.
So Jennifer, while you're showing that there... So I think one point... A couple of things. I only have a couple of fairly basic questions, but I think for us that sit here every night and have these discussions, we use language that maybe a lot of people don't understand. So for example, in what you're showing right now, I mean, you are using the word conceptual. And by me, I mean, just to define conceptual means, this may not be what's built at all, right? This is a concept only, right?
This is a concept. So a PD, not only does it have the land use standards and the development standards, it has a master plan. And that master plan has some flexibility to it, but will basically set out the buildings, the parking, where everything sits, and generally any additional amenities that are included in that. And that's what gets approved as part of the PD overall.
And then in Slide 3, you said something to the effect of, "These lots have existing PDs, but they're empty." Can you explain maybe for the folks, what does it mean that we have a PD but it's empty?
That's a very good question, because PDs are supposed to have regulations attached to them. This city has historically established PDs as land was annexed into the city. And it was... We call it in the office, it's a PD to do a PD. So they've established the PD, and then in the future, you have to go in and determine what would be appropriate for that location.
And why do we... Just again, for education, why do we do that? Why do we set a PD and do that? You know, is there some logic behind that?
I believe that in the past, it was viewed as a way to ensure that council ultimately approve the uses on the site.
Then Slide 4, there's a statement that says, you read and said, "Lots two and three proposed to contain 100% industrial uses." That's meant that that's all that'd be used for, and Lot 1 is not meant to be for industrial use?
Well, Lot 1 could end up having offices or other things, but it wouldn't necessarily...
Not industrial.
Yeah.
Something else other than industrial.
That's the initial proposal.
Okay. I think I might have one more question. Hold on, quickly. I thought I marked one more. Maybe that was it. My last one was in Slide 14, where you said these were the proposed additional uses, right? This was... This came directly from the applicant?
Yes.
This was their submission, right? Okay.
The submissions are included as attachments. I'm not sure of the number offhand. I believe three or four, maybe five or six. And we took those and just cut them out to show the difference between what's allowed and what they're proposing.
Right. But I mean, there's a lot of very detailed stuff in around beverages and fruit, but there are two specific... Very specific requests for large warehouses, right? That was specifically asked for by the applicant, right?
So currently, our definition in our zoning ordinance sets a warehouse and distribution function large is at 75,000 square feet. Warehouse and distribution small is less than that. So part of this PD request is to bump up that number. Whether 300,000 is appropriate, whether it should be less than that, they're starting with 300,000 as a discussion point.
Okay. So I just want to be clear that what was written here in this slide is warehouse and distribution large, 300,000. That was written by the applicant. That's not our definition.
No.
That is the applicant's proposal.
That is the applicant's proposal.
Okay. Okay. I just want to be clear on what that meant. I wasn't really sure who wrote that and what it was. Okay. That's it for me.
All right. So getting back to the building plans. So this is Building 1. This is closest to the commercial portion along Cochran. And the applicant has included site studies to see what the views would be from different points along Half Road, along the freeway, and what you would see from your car or if you were walking. And these have all been available on the website since they were submitted. So these are elevations. This is rendering of what Building 1 would look like from Half Road. And that's that for that one.
You're saying Half Road isn't...
Oh, I'm sorry. DePaul. My mistake. So this is Building 2. Again, they provided site studies to see what it would look like from cars and walking. And then you have both elevation... Or all four elevations, and a rendering from DePaul.
Jennifer, go back to the one with the elevations, the side view, that side. This uses east, west, north, and south. Make sure everybody's clear on what a west elevation means. Make sure everybody knows what we mean when it says west elevation or north elevation.
So east elevation is here. Actually, can you... Can't see that. So east...
May be used as viewed from DePaul or the freeway.
So the top one's from view from the freeway.
Right.
Right? The second one's the view as you come up... What's that road that doesn't connect?
Paul.
No.
This one...
The one south of it.
You wouldn't necessarily be able to see this one, because Building 3 would be in the way. The third one down would be the view from DePaul.
That's the Paul. Yeah.
And then the one farther down would be the view between Building 1 and Building 2.
Yeah.
And the large structure, is that antenna?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you... Sorry, just for my own understanding, can you explain a little bit or identify the parapets on one of the elevations, so I understand?
The what?
The parapet.
Oh, the parapet. We're so overloaded with documents that some of the technological features of this aren't working right now.
No problem.
So when you have a building that goes to a roof line, and you often have rooftop equipment, a thin wall will go from the rooftop farther up to screen all of that material. That's called the parapet.
That's what I... Okay.
And that's the reason for the height? That's what they would like. They technically, if we went... If we kept the development standards that are currently in industrial, light industrial, they would be able to go to 60 to 62 feet. They're asking for 55.
So what's the reason for that five-foot differential?
That's what they requested. Because the building's at 41 feet, so that gives them ample space to build up, to hide any rooftop equipment and any other things that would be on the roof.
Okay.
So if I'm not mistaken, that's a 14-foot parapet?
Correct.
I thought they were only allowed between 10 and 12.
That's above the maximum height.
Oh.
So if they weren't... This is special. They're asking for the deviation from the standards.
I see.
Which is actually a restriction on the existing standards. Okay. Anything more for Building 2?
Commissioners, are there questions for staff?
Well, I have Building 3, too, so...
Oh.
Quick question. In terms of sizes of Building 1, 2, and 3, could you go through that briefly?
Sure. Can I finish showing them first?
Yes.
And then we'll go back to the full site plan. So this is Building 3. This is also a view from DePaul, I believe. And then this would be the view from Half Road. And they've shown them with trees and without, so you can see more of the building. So this is the full site plan for Building 3. Again, they've demonstrated the sightline distances. And these... It's very similar. The top elevation's what you see from the freeway. The middle elevation is what you would see from Half Road. The third elevation is what you would see between... Actually, from DePaul. And then the north elevations between Buildings 2 and 3. And so that is Building 3. So if we go back to the presentation... So these are the lot sizes with the maximum square foot of buildings that would be included. And each one on Lots 2 and 3... Actually, each lot would have buildings that could be split into individual tenant spaces, so you could have as many as 10 different tenants on site.
Yes.
So was there a reason that the building wasn't split physically into possibly four rather than having a big mass?
I think that would be a question for the applicant. I can't answer that.
Commissioners Escado, do you have a question? You good? Yes, Commissioner?
Jennifer, tonight, we're going to be talking probably a whole lot about the project, the proposed project. And to understand really what's before the commission, the project is actually the last and most detailed of three or four actions for us to consider. The first being the general plan designation, which essentially reduces the size of the commercial footprint and increases the size of the industrial footprint.
Correct.
Second one would then be taking the industrial footprint and looking at the zoning of it and what could be used there, which we're going... Actually sliding past that and actually going from just a zoning amendment into a PD. The zoning amendment would allow the applicant to build all kinds of things.
Correct.
The PD allows them to develop fewer things, but it could be a caretaker facility, hotel, auto facility. There's a whole laundry list of things that are going to be allowed in the PD. And they could build any one of those if the PD was approved?
It depends on what is included in the PD and what the permit level would be attached to that, whether it be administrative, conditional, or per... to that, whether it would be administrative, conditional, or permitted by right.
Okay. And the thing that we would then be looking at is what the third or fourth item, which again, I think why most people are here, and that's a specific conceptual project, which is the fulfillment center, the, or whatever you wish to call it, distribution center warehouses. And that is something that could go there if, if the PD was allocated. On the other hand, it doesn't necessarily have to do that. If something went sideways with the development, that something else could be built other than that warehouse facility?
Well, it doesn't, it may not end up being a warehouse facility. It depends what's allowed in the PD, what the applicant would choose to move forward with as far as what they would want to build. If the, let's say if this was all approved and the master plan was approved, and a different applicant came forward to complete the project and wanted to change things, they could come back for an amendment to change what's allowed in the PD. They would also need to change the master plan if they wanted to build differently. And that would go through this process all over again.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, other questions?
So the applicant is prepared with their presentation as well.
Great. Why don't we go ahead and move on to the applicant's presentation then?
Hey, thanks, Jennifer. Thanks for having us. My name's Will Parker, and I'm responsible for Trammell Crow Company in Northern California. And we very much value the opportunity to bring a project forward in Morgan Hill. It's a terrific place to, to live and work. We fully appreciate that and have enjoyed, sure? And I've enjoyed our interactions the past year and a half studying this market and working to bring a project forward. We're here, I'm actually joined by quite a few teammates sitting mostly in this first row, and we're here to participate. But first and foremost, all of us are here to listen and to digest comments and questions tonight, which is not only important to us but very instrumental to this process. So I'll provide a brief overview of the project, and then I've asked, and there's a couple slides at the end where I've asked an economist, Ben Sigmund, with Economic and Planning Systems, to address the key topics of jobs and fiscal benefits of the project. So for context, our project is located at the four, at the fourth commercial corner of Cochrane Road. It's the 60 acres highlighted in yellow all along Highway 101. The other three corners of the project are predominantly retail, commercial. We spent all of 2018 studying the submarket. And importantly, that process was studying two documents in particular, the 2035 General Plan of the City, as well as the city's collaborative economic blueprint. And there, as you know, there are clearer themes related to real estate expressed in these documents, and these priorities include the following: less retail, more good jobs, less commuting, expansion opportunities for local and regional companies, preservation of industrial employment lands, and fiscal sustainability. Those are called out in the excerpts highlighted on this slide. And that feedback is instrumental to our plan before you today. On the left, as Jennifer highlighted, are the historic general plan land use designations. And on the right is our proposed plan. And in short, what we are proposing reduces retail, increases the jobs producing area of the site, local job opportunities equals less commuting, and strongly promotes fiscal Some of these renderings Jennifer went through in her presentation, so I'll move quickly, but I do want to highlight a few things. And you might wonder why the trees are see-through. We're showing small and translucent trees so that you can see the architecture of the buildings, so this does not reflect the screening landscaping at maturity. We would point out the use of glass, the articulation along the walls, the coloring of the panels, the screening of all the rooftop equipment, and the highly landscaped grounds on all sides of the buildings, as well as street and sidewalk public improvements. What we do are very nice projects to attract attractive companies. Can I walk through just quickly and kind of zoom in on a few of the areas that Jennifer spoke to? And part of this is response to questions that we've received the past months interacting with folks in the community, and just some, some basic project elements. So to start, you know, the, the building heights are well below the 55-foot maximum. So this is one, this is Building Two, so this is a taller building, it's higher than Building One. And you can see the floor of the parapet is, is 41 feet versus the maximum 55. This is a cross-section of the site looking north. Highway 101 is on the left, and Building Three, which is the larger building, is on the right. And the takeaway here is that the project is actually set back quite a distance from Highway 101, which we think is an appropriate scale. So if you, if you can see it, there's a small number on the bottom of the slide there. The, the distance from the building to the first car on Highway 101 is actually 350 feet. One other things that we'd like to highlight with the project is in the drain channel trail that runs north-south along the western boundary of our project for the entire length. And the idea is to create a very attractive landscape along our property land that aesthetically benefits the trail, offers shade, and makes it more attractive for walking, running, biking, and generally promotes its use. There's one side of one building with service doors facing east. We've continued the, that's DePaul Drive on the right. And we've continued the highly landscaped features all the way down that. But in addition, we've added a significant wall feature behind the trees. And so in a sense, it's doubly screened, but the intent is to add another layer of the screening as well as sound mitigation. And just a final design note, with the audience of tenants that we're seeking, technology and green features are really important. And we're looking at sort of compatibility, bike and electric vehicle provisioning, and then also the addition of an architectural feature that Jennifer mentioned that goes through the approved height limit, but is intended to house telecommunications equipment in a way that blends in with the project. And that's what that 5G logo is, is meant to represent. It's something that we've executed in another market, and, you know, interactions with folks related to lack of cell service, lack of internet service, we thought this would be a very strong benefit to the community and something that would be favorably received. Some of the project benefits, we've highlighted, I've highlighted earlier in the project, and Jennifer has mentioned, but I did want to mention, and this is called out in our application letter, but I did want to mention and highlight two items with specificity. And the first is that we strongly believe the project will generate 1,000 or more net new jobs and 100 million or more in annual wages and salaries. And that's something based on our experience, so we're very comfortable stating. The other thing is the opportunity to highlight public art on the buildings. It's a really intriguing part of this project. We've had preliminary discussions on this with the city and others. And in response to that, the Library, Culture, and Arts Commission has assigned two commissioners to advise on the project. Taking a step back, this visual, I think, is really important, and it represents a macro view of the Bay Area industrial market, and it's really in two parts. The green is the distribution corridor, that's the Port of Oakland, a lot of goods coming in and out of there. The 880 corridor, 580 out to the Central Valley, Stockton, up to Sacramento, and I-80 back to the Port of Oakland. That's the traditional industrial market in its truest sense. The blue area is the innovation economy, and that's something that we would peg to the mid-'90s start of web browsers. It's characterized by technology, job growth, a high amount of patent filing, high wages. This is the part of the industrial market we're addressing. It's our specialty, and it is what we believe Morgan Hill is linked to. Simply put, Silicon Valley makes things, and that value-add process is what we refer to as advanced manufacturing. Said another way, and not to hit this on the head, but I do think it's important, and this actually was a statement that someone recently stood up in a Chamber of Commerce meeting and stated, Morgan Hill is just not a distribution market. And so what we've tried to do here is compare Morgan Hill to Fremont. Fremont's roughly where the area on the previous slide where the blue and green intersect, near where it says 880. And we asked CBOE to perform a demographic study of a 10-mile radius around our site as well as Fremont. As you know, distribution is about demographics, location, reaching consumers and businesses, and you hear the differences. Fremont has 10 times the number of businesses in that same area. It has 15 times the number of employees. It has 7.5 times the population. This is why Fremont is a distribution market and Morgan Hill is not. Focusing on the, really the relevant market to our project, this slide calls out which companies have been most active in Silicon Valley in the industrial space. And so we evaluated the most recent, recently completed 3 million square feet of projects, and the vast majority of those have been leased or sold to manufacturing or technology-related entities. And these are names that you would recognize. It's Google, it's Tesla, it's Apple, it's Facebook. We've been fortunate to work with some of those companies. Getting a little bit more granular, here are leases that have transpired in Silicon Valley in the size range of our project since 2015. So this is a more granular subset of what the previous slide was talking about. So I'm just going to scroll through these. There's, there's quite a few, but they range from 60,000 feet to 600,000 feet. These are those names and a few more. And there's a strong theme. These are technology-based companies, research and development-focused. It's companies engaged in manufacturing and product assembly. Something you might know, not know about the market, Santa Clara County is one of the largest and fastest-growing manufacturing hubs in the United States. It also already has one of the largest manufacturing bases of employment. So roughly 20% of all jobs in Santa Clara County are related to that space. Also, that same percentage is true of Morgan Hill. And this is something, it's, it's a very competitive space. These are attractive jobs, and these communities are going after those jobs to try to recruit them to their cities. So I'm going to ask, you know, in a second here, Ben Sigmund, an economist, to come up and speak. But before I do that, I'm just going to make one final comment. These are examples of target industries within advanced manufacturing, and I think reading through this list is valuable. And I think when you do so, you get a sense for the high quality of jobs and the high quality of companies that we're trying to attract, from aerospace, artificial intelligence, industrial robotics, semiconductors, technology companies. I think that, that paints a good picture of what we're trying to do and what the market really is. And so with that, there are two slides left, and I'm going to ask Ben to, he's got a broken foot, so he's going to come up here and talk a little bit about jobs and fiscal benefits for the city.
Great. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ben Sigmund. I'm a principal with Economic and Planning Systems. We're a consulting firm that specializes in real estate and regional economics as well as fiscal impact analysis. We've worked on projects like this with Trammell Crow in the past and have a great working relationship. We also work with cities like yourselves all the time. I want to point out tonight just very quickly some of the economic development benefits as well as fiscal benefits of this project to the city. We'll start with jobs. As many of you probably are aware, Morgan Hill's essentially a, a community people are living in and commuting out of daily. Almost nine out of 10 of the working residents here in Morgan Hill leave the city for their primary job. And so we took a look at who's leaving. It's about 6,500 folks every day going out to primary jobs outside the city, and we looked at the industries they're in based on census data. And the, and the analysis suggested that about four out of 10, 40%, are in industries that would be compatible with this project. So manufacturing primarily, but also support services around manufacturing. We think that's a really compelling reason to consider this project for economic development reasons. And then very quickly fiscal. This is the effect of the project on the city's general fund specifically. The city has studied this in the past. You've hired a firm, Strategic Economics, which is a peer firm of ours. They did industrial analysis previously. And we replicated their model, using your current budget and some of your current operational factors, police calls for service data, et cetera, as well as the specifics of this project, its size, the types of jobs we think will be in the building, other factors. And we're concluding preliminarily that the tax revenue that'll flow to the general fund minus the costs for the city to provide full service to the project will yield $700,000 a year today, in today's dollars, today's budget. So really good reason to, to think about the project and its community benefit.
So that, that concludes our, our presentation.
Great, thank you. We'll open up for questions. Let's, so we'll start over at the end.
I'll start. So thanks for the presentation. It's quite interesting, nice presentation. Like your colors. So let me, can I just start with maybe getting down to some of the basics here? So I guess we could call it the elephant in the room, or maybe better known as the distribution center in the room. So you, if I was to take this presentation in so much isolation, it's a really good story. I really like everything I've seen in here, but I noticed you didn't ever use the word distribution center warehouse or anything like that, right? You've made no reference to it in any of the, in the documents. Yet one of your main changes you're asking for is a fairly significant distribution center, which is maybe one of the reasons a large number of people in the room here tonight. Can you comment on, I don't see it mentioned here, I don't see it part of your plan, you don't, you don't make any mention to it. Can you comment on, is that meant to be part of the options in here or not, in, in what you've just described in your presentation here?
Yeah, and I don't know if you've seen it, but one of the things we've done is put out the, the website that's, that's called out on the first and last page of this presentation that speaks to that. But there will be trucks at the site, and the industry that we're targeting is advanced manufacturing. So, well, I think trucks is a sensitive issue related to warehouse, related to warehouse distribution. So that, that's where I was going with that. Distribution use is a, a part of any industrial project. And so that, manufacturing projects, I would say, are a little bit different than that. They tend to have a, a smaller amount of warehouse use. It is a financing requirement for a project, so what we have to do is, is get a lender at vertical, we own the site, but at vertical construction, have a capital partner and a lender step up on the project. And to do that, there's a broad set of leases that they look for from, from a national perspective to be able to move a project forward. So while the market doesn't demand it in this case, it is something that's required by the capital markets to have warehouse distribution as an approved use in your building. It's not been our experience that, that the Silicon Valley market is a distribution market. I tried to make that clear in the presentation. That's really something, Port of Oakland, 880 corridor, 580, Central Valley. We have done distribution projects. We understand that business. Right now, what we're seeing, when we're contacted by a group like that, is they focus on the 880 corridor, and even that, they see how expensive that is, and then they quickly go out to the Central Valley. So what we're focused on really are, we've done research on that list of companies that I showed, and the best we can tell, I, almost every example in that list is making or assembling something. And so it's, it's a value-add process in Silicon, in the Silicon Valley industrial market. Things need to come in so that there is that component to it. Things need to go out, but there's something that happens in that building that's, that's important. So that, that's really what the market is. And there is a warehouse distribution functionality within it, but I think it's a little bit different than what you're alluding to in the question.
So, okay, so I'm not following your answer. So what you seem to be saying, and I'm, I'm not trying to put bullshit in my mouth, so if I'm saying this correctly, you can correct me, right? But you seem to be saying that as part of an industrial, a large industrial site like this, that vehicles, trucks, stuff being delivered, stuff leaving, that general operation is expected. I would agree with that, of course. You'd expect that, right? That's different than, you know, let's say a 200-bay, 24-hours-a-day distribution warehouse, for example, right?
Yeah.
All I'm asking, if you, if you don't know the answer, that's fine, but I'm asking, because you never mentioned it in the presentation here, you seem to know that for financing and to get this project, it needs to be included. and to get this project, it needs to be included, right? But it's not the intent. Is that what you're saying, or is that not what you're saying? I'm just trying to understand, what exactly are you saying?
Warehouse distribution use is a part of the advanced manufacturing market. You know, things need to come in, things need to go out. But in terms of being a whole project that's warehouse distribution, that's just not what we see. That's not what this market is. And so there is a component of warehouse in these buildings. There's also a component of assembly, there's also a component of office.
Sure.
That's just what we see in the Silicon Valley market.
Okay. So you think it's more, again, I know you don't have a specific answer because it's a long ways off yet, but that's what you're seeing in the vision for what you're trying to do here because of the location of Morgan Hill, its proximity to Silicon Valley. It's more in what you're describing in your deck here, right, in your presentation, correct?
Liam, I want to, can you restate that? I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
Yeah, that's okay. No, it's good. As I said, I don't want to be putting, so you seem to be indicating, I'm trying to read back what you're saying, which is although you may be requiring or requesting that warehousing distribution be part of the PD, right? And warehousing distribution is a natural part of manufacturing, for example, which we would all concur with, this concept of, you seem to be indicating that the project is going to be more about this advanced manufacturing technology and other types of services as opposed to like a downright brutal only distribution warehouse. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's what we're saying. We're also saying that, you know, you want to be straight up, there are trucks at these facilities.
Of course.
There is a warehouse component.
Of course.
So that use is something that has to happen in the buildings. But I think that's a little different than the other scenario.
Okay, all right. I have other questions, but we'll linger for now. Maybe others have questions.
Additional?
I have a question that's related to what Liam is alluding to. So you're asking for the increase to 300,000 square feet because of the requirement for your capital and your financing, correct? Is that why you want to increase the square footage for distribution?
I think, so I'm actually going to ask my teammate, Tom Joder, to come up and speak to that. Tom submitted our application. He's our development manager. He leads that effort in our team across a number of buildings. So, Tom, if you could please join me up here and speak to the 300,000-square-foot question, that'd be helpful.
Hi, I'm Tom Joder. I'm development and construction manager for Trammell Crowe Company. The purpose of the change of the designation is basically to, I think, just balance out the project. Both uses are allowed and are present in the, not only in the industrial, but the designation of large and small is more specific to the former commercial uses. So we're asking for the designation to be changed as a clarification. You can see by our square footages that one of our buildings would be large under that definition, the other building would be, I think, just over. So the three buildings would be considered large. One of them would be considered, actually, under the current, all three of them are considered large in the marketplace. Well, sorry, you know, it's, again, the, both leases are allowed. We have asked for the change in designation to basically be more clear about the use in the buildings. The manufacturer uses would be large. So we don't think 76,000 square foot of manufacturing is large, and most of the marketplace would be small. We're trying to make those definitions better suit the understanding in the industry as a standard. So the purpose is simply for clarification. As both leases are allowed in the proposed zoning, it's basically just to make it clear for the people that we're going to market to and get financing from.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah?
Tom, can you get back for a second? So I didn't follow that answer at all, just so you know. No, I didn't, I'm sorry. Now, hold on, guys. So it wasn't meant to be a joke. I'm just serious. Okay, but let me ask you again. So my previous question was, and I'm not trying to set anybody up, I'm just asking a question so we can give the best feedback and advice here, right? You said, "It's not the intent. A big distribution center is not the intent." But distribution and trucking and moving stuff in and out is part of an industrial operations, which we would all get with, right? I guess we're asking you, Tom, that you're specifically asking to include distribution warehousing of 300,000 square feet or more, right? Why are you asking for that? What is it that you think's going to happen here, or could happen here, that requires you to have a warehouse 300,000 square feet? Can you just, I'm trying to be as specific as you can.
Okay. It's my understanding of the, call it term of art of the industry, is that a manufacturing facility that is less than 300,000 square feet would not be considered large in the greater marketplace. Related to, for example, if we had a user for the whole thing, and one of the buildings was going to have the function of distribution, so if you had that designation, one of the buildings, or at least some part of it, could be used for that beyond the 300,000 square feet. And that's the purpose of the request for the change in the designation from 75 to 300. Does that make sense?
I'm just, I try not to be ignorant, but I'm, please, you'll have to wait for a public comment, sorry. So, thanks, I mean, I'm not trying to put you in the spot here, but, so what I'm trying to understand is, I understand what you're saying, which is, if you, I grew up in manufacturing, so big manufacturing, one of those logos here, by the way, so I know 75,000 square feet is pretty small, actually, for a manufacturing facility. And a 300,000-square-foot manufacturing facility is not uncommon either, right? But what I'm trying to understand from your request is, just so I'm clear, is you're specifically saying warehousing and distribution. You're not saying a manufacturing facility 300,000 square feet. You're saying a warehousing and distribution facility 300,000 square feet. What is it you're actually, but some of what you're describing is something different.
I mean, those are the uses that are, you know, have been a part of the Morgan Hill process. So we're working within the uses that we inherit. We're trying to be clear about what we think fits the project. But I think Tom said something really important, which is that, you know, in the marketplace that we would say Morgan Hill's a part of, which is Silicon Valley, as well as the greater market throughout the Bay Area, you know, the size delineations within Morgan Hill are outdated.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Habib?
So I apologize if this is an obvious question. For me, it just feels like a disconnect with what I'm hearing right now, and I'm trying to understand, because, you know, you mentioned that, you know, Morgan Hill is not a distribution market, and I'm looking at the conceptual building designs, and I'm trying to understand when you say, you know, Morgan Hill is not a distribution market, yet these designs look very similar to what a distribution market would provide. And I also bring that up because I'm sure, you know, other people have also looked at the projects that have been previously been developed by Trammell Crowe. And some of those projects that have been built are very similar to the conceptual design that you have submitted today. So can you explain a little bit better why the conceptual design looks so much like a distribution center that had been previously built? And, you know, maybe explain a little bit of that side of it to us, please?
Sure. And I think there's an important, I appreciate the question. There's an, if you look at our track record, a significant amount of the business that we've done locally in Northern California has just gone manufacturing. So I think that's an important thing to recognize. The industrial space that we've operated in has been more often than not manufacturing versus the other. The other thing to realize is that, well, there are nuances, and every project we do is different by submarket. So we do analyze the particular market we're in and craft the project accordingly. That said, it's really, in the industrial space, it's really about what's happening inside the buildings. And I think when you look at projects that we've done, and I think it's a different market, it's in the distribution market, and it's not a distribution building. The Draxler Meyer project that we built, it looks very similar to our building number two that's shown on the site plan. That project, if you go to their website, it's absolutely a manufacturing space. They highlight on their website that they spent $24 million in a 290,000-square-foot building. That's $83 a foot. That may not mean a lot to people. That's an astronomical amount of money to put into an industrial building. Why are they doing that? Because it's a manufacturing product. So, you know, what we've done and some of the criticism that we've received has actually been for products that are highly manufacturing-related. And it's really, the location is an important factor. There are design elements that we do for each of the markets that are different and speak to manufacturing. Part of the, you know, here, what we're trying to do is create spaces that work both for companies locally to expand as well as others to come into the market. And so how do we do that? You know, having some sort of scale is important. And so we can attract, we don't have a tenant currently. We often operate on a speculative basis. And what companies respond to is start of construction. You start a project, the CEO and management team know that it's real, and they know there's a timeline, and then they make that decision to come. And so we're focused on flexibility, to be as flexible as we can. And we get questions, really interesting questions, when tenants are considering our space that relate to their manufacturing process. You know, just hypothetically, things like, do you have a 400-foot span for our process inside your building? So we want to maintain flexibility to be able to address those types of questions and requirements so that we can be as successful as possible recruiting advanced manufacturing companies to Morgan Hill.
Okay. I apologize. So I know you brought up another project that was similar. Can you repeat that project's name one more time, please?
There's several that I think are relevant.
Okay.
The one that I referenced because of its, there is a parallel in its basic design, is the Draxler Meyer building. That's a German supplier to Tesla. They make parts for Tesla cars.
Okay. And was that the one that was off of 237?
That's, it's off of 580. So it's actually something in the, where we characterize as the distribution corridor that I showed in that slide in Livermore. But that's, you know, a very strong example of a manufacturing project. So it really is what's happening in the buildings, and I think it's that flexibility and that, and understanding that that helps answer that question.
So, you know, it's still a bit difficult for me to understand that because I know you did mention Livermore in that area is more of a distribution hub or a distribution-centered area. And you're talking about Morgan Hill, which you had mentioned that it was not. So it's a little bit difficult for me to understand those, you know, similarities that are quite stark, right? They're pretty obvious. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, explaining that, but it's, again, for me, I don't really see where there's now a differentiation between the two markets that were initially presented to us.
I think your presentation is very informative for me. I had the impression, looking at the plans, that this was really a distribution project. That was the concept. And an example would be, and I'm not even suggesting that this would be the case, it would be like an Amazon fulfillment center, of which the closest one is in Tracy. So it almost made sense. And that has characteristics that I believe a number of the members of the committee are here to express concerns about, the amount of truck traffic and, you know, large vehicles. And what I hear you saying now is, this project does not exclude something like that, but what your focus is in meeting whatever demand is out there, including manufacturing, because the report even seems to focus this on warehousing and distribution. And is there, maybe this is almost for staff, but if we approve these provisions, is there some way where if ultimately this is used as a true distribution center, like an Amazon distribution center, that concerns that we may have on that particular type of project could come back? Or is, once the PD is approved, that provides a carte blanche approval, anything, including a distribution or fulfillment center?
So you, the PD is what the zoning regulations will be for this site. Should we want, should the commission desire to define fulfillment center and then require a certain level of permitting, that can be part of the PD. If the commission would prefer to redefine what warehouse and distribution is, whether or not they would want to break it out and make a freestanding warehouse and distribution center versus ancillary warehouse and distribution center attached to a different use. There's also size limits. There's also different types of permitting. You could make, if you wanted to define fulfillment center, you could make that a conditional use in the PD. There's a number of different options. So we would be looking for input tonight on what you would like to see, and then we'll come back with a proposal.
Thank you.
Clarifying.
You're done? Any other questions from you, Commissioner?
No.
Okay.
Just a clarifying question for Jennifer. I apologize, you have to stand and wait for this. And that was regarding what Commissioner Tanda had brought up, and that was regarding, you know, the permitting uses, et cetera. And I just want to clarify, are zoning district currently, large distribution as well as distribution with outdoor storage is permitted by right? If this amendment goes through, otherwise it normally is not?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that this PD amendment writes what you want that to be.
Okay.
So if you want it to be 400, if you want it to be 200, if you want it to be whatever you, the commission recommends and council approves, that's what will govern land use on this property.
Okay. And to clarify, the draft that has been submitted by the project proposals state that warehouse distribution, large and small, would be permitted by right?
That's what they proposed.
And not conditional?
That's what they proposed, yes.
Yep. So before we continue, just for my own sake, and I imagine for the sake of some other people in the audience, can you help me visualize 300,000 square feet? What's a building in town close to that? Or, you know, tell me three Safeways or two Home, something that I can kind of make sense of.
Earlier, I had asked staff that same question. I have a few numbers. Specialized has 255,856 feet. This is our specialized here in town. It is in two buildings. But one building would be Young's Market, which is 285,877 square feet at a 44-foot height. Pyramid, 151,242 square feet, I think with a height of 32 feet. But I've got a number of them because I too had difficulty envisioning what that is and scale and scope. So we're not unfamiliar in Morgan Hill with that.
Gotcha.
To answer it using commercial, it would be three targets or three Safeways. That's about 300,000. About 330,000, yeah.
Got it. Thank you for that. Commissioner Tanda, you have some questions?
Yeah. Can you go back to your project benefit slide? That one. So I like a lot of this as well, but when you read into it, it's, you know, one of our challenges, I think, in Morgan Hill is that we're far enough away from Silicon Valley that it's kind of a special place, where we get a lot of the influences of Silicon Valley. And one of those, I guess, is, I don't necessarily need to show a hand, but I guess, like myself, a lot of us sit in our cars at 5:30 in the morning and drive north, right? And we do it for a reason. There are significant jobs and significant salaries up there, salaries that allow us to buy our million-dollar homes down here in Morgan Hill. Those houses are $2 million up in San Jose. But, so when you say jobs-housing balance, you're making a lot of claims there. So what are you assuming is happening here that's giving us that type of jobs-housing balance? Meaning what? Meaning that we think the people that would work in these jobs, maybe not everybody, but some of them, would be able to buy, live in this town and work in these facilities? Is that what that's meant to indicate? And if you want to bring anybody else up to answer that question, too.
Yeah, I do think... Yeah, I do think, and I've got a broken foot, Ben, but I do think I'd like you to come up to, there's a level of analysis that Ben's performed on this as an economist that I think is really helpful to hear, related to, you know, our projections that we show there are based on our experience. And, you know, for example, it's a different project, it's a different market, but that Livermore project, the best we can tell, has produced 2,200 jobs in a project that's twice the size. Good salaries are what we anticipate here. And so, I absolutely do think that it helps in terms of affordability of housing and workers being able to live here and do that. But I would like Ben to comment a little bit on his findings on that topic, which I think are important.
Good. Thank you. So, the idea with the jobs housing balance is that cities seeking to be more complete communities want to offer a job base that's sort of commensurate with their residential base. And, you know, it's an ideal, right? There aren't really any cities in the Bay Area that I'm aware of where everyone lives and works in the same town. It's a nine-county labor market, so people travel for all kinds of reasons. That said, being able, for some, to find a job in your hometown can be a great thing. Takes trips off the road, and, you know, it's very beneficial. And for, you know, sustainability reasons, for quality of life reasons, for having a town that's not just a place where people live, a complete community. And so, this project, with its targeting of advanced manufacturing, will offer jobs for people who can live in this town. And my earlier slide, the idea is that there are people who live here now, who have jobs they commute out for, who might find great jobs in this project. Because there are, particularly manufacturing, very well-paying jobs in Santa Clara County. In fact, the average wage of a manufacturing industry worker in Santa Clara County is $200,000. You can look it up on the Employment Development Department website of the state. So, the opportunity is here, if this project is delivered and marketed as suggested, to bring these types of jobs to this community. And that's what that jobs housing comment's about.
Oh, wait a minute. I gotta, I gotta ask a question about what you just said. You're saying the average manufacturing worker in Santa Clara County makes 200,000?
You can all look it up. It's on the state's data website.
Please, 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 please. If we could all just, where your turn, thank you.
Manufacturing industry average. And so, that includes executives, it includes janitors.
Okay. Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're fine.
Please, if, I'll go ahead and issue the first reminder for everybody to please just allow the comments to take place. You'll have your chance later, I promise you. Let's just be respectful of everybody. I understand that you might disagree, but let's just allow the conversation to continue. Thanks. Joe.
So, to be, yeah. In a second, let's, yeah, we'll finish.
Very broad average doesn't tell me a lot. A median and a distribution would tell me a whole lot more. Because in your project support letter, right, you made some claims that this project would deliver. And that statement, I don't think supports those claims.
I am a numbers person. I'd love to deliver you a perfect distribution or a median, but the state reports out an average, and I'm not saying that's necessarily the number this project will achieve. The point I wanted to make tonight is simply that these are, this industry, manufacturing in Silicon Valley, includes a lot of great jobs, and we think a lot of great jobs could be in this box.
Okay. Additional questions?
Yes. So, I feel we're going to make you stand up and sit down here multiple times. You could sit at that table as well if you wanted, but, so, I think what threw me off a little bit there, so thank you for that answer. By the way, you know, for the audience here, if you don't mind me saying, Chair, please be respectful. It's very difficult to stand up here and answer those questions, and, you know, I respect every, you know, I respect you coming up here and I appreciate you doing it. So, please, please give them the respect to be able to answer without cheering. So, the other, the thing that threw me off was, then there's another, your other bullet says 1,000 new jobs, which is terrific, right? I mean, you know, it's fantastic. But when you break down $100 million across 1,000 jobs, and you take out some benefits and stuff, that's like an 80 or $100,000 a year job. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, but difficult to be buying houses in this town on an $80,000 a year salary, right? So, I guess the point I'm making is, I like what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying, I grew up in manufacturing, I know what you mean, I don't buy the $200,000 story for one minute, sorry, but I do, but I do buy the fact that you can, you know, you can get good jobs in manufacturing, you could make a good living in manufacturing, and sometimes they're way better than some retail jobs. I get that, right? But I feel like sometimes, again, just for me, you're kind of, you're overselling, overstating stuff a little bit here. Now, I think we should just all be a little bit more realistic about what we can and cannot do in this city, right? One other question I have is, you flashed up a couple of logos, big names, big logos, maybe just for effect, right? But it also sounds like the people that you worked with before. I, I mean, you know, to bring something like that down here has a lot of benefits, it's got its own challenges too, but you mentioned about data communications. I wouldn't, I mean, I actually work in high-tech myself, so bringing anybody down here with the crappy infrastructure we have when it comes to the internet, right? No, no, I'm asking this genuinely, is that something we're planning to address? Because I, the reason why my question is, I know that it takes to bring tech, technology companies, and today, if they haven't got that big pipe, if they haven't got that infrastructure, if they haven't got that failover, all those, all those aspects, they don't come, right? Irrespective of how much, how big a building is, they won't come, right? But I'm interested, because I think that they're the kind of people we want to attract here. So, again, if you don't know the answer, that's okay, but I'm just curious. You put it down here, and I was wondering what you meant by that.
And what we can speak to is our history and on projects that are, you know, tailored for their specific city, but with similar aspects in terms of what you're referring to. And sometimes we've, you know, in our North San Jose project at Midpoint, for instance, we actually expect a very high amount of power in one of the buildings. But, you know, there are things that are achievable here, and so, I don't see why that wouldn't be possible to bring those companies. In terms of, I mean, that's literally the market, that's who is moving the market. It's those, it's the companies, and this, since 2015, those companies, and the vast majority of those are making things. It's not a pure distribution function. In terms of the wireless connectivity, voice and data improvements, we've done it on another project, so we have a history with that. It's about recruiting the right carriers to come into your, into your building. We have a history with that. We view it as a huge benefit to the community first and foremost, you know, even over something that, you know, that the intent of that is not to benefit, you know, our building, is to benefit the community, and also, it can be a smart investment. So, I don't see anything that would preclude us from being successful in our mission of trying to bring a meaningful company to Morgan Hill.
Okay. Thank you.
So, follow-up just on that. So, this is speculative as far as finding that provider. You guys haven't done any sort of research to see who might actually be interested in coming in?
You know, Tom Joder implemented that on another project, and so, I don't know, Tom, if you have a, if you want to speak to the specifics of that, but it's pretty early to do that. That said, it's something that, you know, we've done before, but is it, do you want to make a comment on that?
So, there's a distinction between infrastructure and a customer base. The state has a grid of telecommunications lines that generally mirror the infrastructure of rail. The CPUC allows for big utilities, the packbells, the AT&amp;Ts, to run along the rail line. So, the biggest trunks that run through the state of California, they go from San Francisco to Los Angeles, run through Morgan Hill. It's about demand that causes these companies to develop the spot infrastructure to serve that demand. If we're able to attract a significant technology company and they place an order, the AT&amp;Ts of the world will string fiber to them. What we do to facilitate in all of our projects is to speculatively put in a very extensive network of SPAC, four-inch PVC interconnected buried pipes that allow for local service, regular voice and data, your regular, you know, whoever your funding cable servers are. We always put in a second set of conduits and a configuration that's known as a meet-me vault configuration that allows interconnectivity between the buildings and allows additional providers to pull infrastructure and that, literally sitting there waiting for an order to come. So, if you get a Google, for example, that has a particular function that's data-intensive, the pipe's sitting there, they say, okay, we want X amount of fiber capacity. AT&amp;T, believe me, is going to pull whatever glass or, you know, cable or generally it's fiber optic, you know, glass strand to that user. So, we're providing the infrastructure in the ground on every project that we build that facilitates that. In the case of San Leandro, we back up the project we recently built, we back up to a major rail line, and we have the ability through the lit San Leandro provider to provide dark fiber to any, all of those buildings and in-between those buildings. Same thing at our most recent project in North San Jose, we have vault infrastructure that as that buyer requests the provision of a service, it's all sitting there on the ground. They say, we need X amount of capacity, the provider, whoever they use, will pull that to them. So, what we can provide is the physical infrastructure to do it. Same thing with voice and data related to wireless. We provide a structure and the grounding power, et cetera, that would allow for T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, or whoever the next 5G guy that's going to pop up to literally pull into our building, pull up the tower, set arrays, and to begin to serve customers. That's the function of what we do as speculative developers. We provide everything that we need that a, for example, warehouse distribution project would not. Super high powers, super flat floors, grounding capability, the things that tech users want in place in order to consider a development for their occupancy.
Questions?
Thanks, Sam.
I have two quick questions for you. I have more, but I'll ask you two, and then we'll take a break for a few seconds. So, distribution uses for distribution center within the zoning code, standalone versus ancillary? It sounds like what you would most likely end up for as clients are clients who have distribution as a secondary or additional component to what they're doing within your building. Would that be fair to say? That it's not necessarily the primary use, distribution, warehouse and distribution?
It is not the primary use in what we anticipate in the project.
Okay.
It's not the primary use that we anticipate in the project.
Okay. So, if we were to move forward with conversation, and one of the recommendations, or one of the, some of the feedback that comes back to city staff and to you is to maybe define distribution centers, you know, to clearly define ancillary versus standalone, is that going to be, I mean, I'm not necessarily looking for, you know, obviously, I know you want the broadest use possible because I think it facilitates your conversations around capital and your conversations around tenants, et cetera, but is there viability for a project with ancillary uses outlined and maybe not standalone?
And, you know, to be clear, we'll always digest feedback and think, you know, thoughtfully on that and take it in. It makes financing your project very difficult with the capital markets, as both that equity partner as well as debt. And so, we would be asking for that flexibility here.
Understood. The second question I wanted to ask before we took a short break is, you made a statement in this, forgive me if it's a dumb question, but you made a statement earlier about, you know, the distribution centers, look at the market and the innovation area that we're in, and clearly move inland because of the price. Why wouldn't manufacturing do the same? I guess is my question. Why, why would they choose to stay within this higher, more expensive market instead of just following suit?
Yeah, no, and that's a good question. And in part, you know, with the distribution use, sometimes they're looking for things like rail. You know, they want a rail line that goes straight to their building and, and cheap rent, and every mile matters. And there's something called a drayage cost, you know? It's what does the driver cost? What does insurance cost? What is the gas cost? It's a business of pennies, to a certain extent. What manufacturers want in that innovation, it's the people, it's the workforce, it's that skill set that, you know, exists here in Morgan Hill, to be straight up with you. So, that workforce is very valuable, and that's why the manufacturers show up in Silicon Valley. The other point is that, you know, with, there's a, selfishly, there's a, there's a very different, different level of rent associated with a warehouse, you know, a pure warehouse building versus an advanced manufacturing rent level. That, you know, if you pull any report from any of the major brokerage houses, they'll call that out very specifically. And it's a meaningful difference to an investor's return, but it's something that I think hopefully gives a level of comfort, that that's not our game plan. And we've had, you know, instances in San Jose, the North San Jose project was one like that, where we exercised patience and we waited. The market was a little bit weak when we delivered that, that project, and we ended up with a terrific result through that patience. And so, it, we are motivated in every way to, for that, that best outcome. And so, I think there's an alignment there that should be considered.
Okay. Great. With that, I think what we'll do is we'll take a, let's see, it's A31. Let's take about a five, six-minute break. We can excuse some of the high school students that may be in the audience and get them home to dinner, and then we will resume, and we'll get started with some public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you talk about that a little bit? And specifically to the conceptual design, which has both trailer parkings as well as docks?
Sure. Thank you for the question and for bringing me back up. So there are some differences in, I believe, that we didn't have it in our plan, but I think in the plan that Jennifer presented, where we did change one of the differences versus, I think, the version on our sign, for instance, the original rendering or site plan that we submitted, is we did change the size. You know, the size of that third building has come down since we first started talking to the city. The other thing that's happened is as we've analyzed the likely employment numbers in the buildings, we needed to create more room for parking. And part of that is why we have a relatively low coverage project. We're building roughly forty percent of the site is covered in buildings. Your code says sixty percent could be. So this project could be, you know, forty or fifty percent bigger than what we're showing per the code. It was important to create employee parking spots. I believe in the recent version, we're showing seven hundred car parks. That translates into a thousand or more employees. Some people work at different times. Some people carpools. Some people ride bikes. We're looking at electric vehicle and electric bike provisioning. So there are those adjustments. You know, the Silicon Valley market, I think, in general approaches storage differently than the distribution market. So there's less of an emphasis on it in Silicon Valley than, you know, in the distribution corridor that we showed. It really is storage is what it is. It's not usually just things sitting there in our experience. So those were some of the changes that we made. But there were several parts to that question, so I want to make sure that I-
So I think that the primary part was essentially my observation that distribution center not only had those loading docks, they also had a substantial amount of trailer parking. And when I was looking at some of the other advanced manufacturing that has been developed in essentially Northern California, they have a substantial amount of parking for normal vehicles and not for trailers. And it's maybe just an observation I've seen, but it looks like a strong correlation, of course, which doesn't mean causation, a strong correlation of almost all the distribution centers I've seen that have a lot of parking for those tractor trailers. And when you compare it to those advanced manufacturing buildings, they have, yes, a lot of loading docks, but not, almost no parking for tractor trailers.
Right. And on the service doors in particular, we don't know, we have strong conviction in the profile of the tenants that we can bring. We don't know necessarily what the process inside the building is. And that's the reason for the flexibility in showing a high number of service doors. And so technology companies, manufacturers, the types of companies that would be in that building, they'll have a process, but they're also different from company to company. One of the things that we run into is that we plan to put those in. It's actually less expensive to put those in upfront versus to go back later and try to cut those out. And so it's really, again, the flexibility topic. The storage of trailers, you know, it's something that, some of it is necessary. It is less important in Silicon Valley than the Central Valley or the distribution corridor out to the Central Valley. But we're trying to recruit companies and be flexible. And, you know, based on, if Ben's right in his analysis, you know, his employment numbers are higher than ours, you know, there is a case where some of that storage needs to turn into more employee parking spots.
Okay. And this might be, you know, on-the-spot question, but off the top of your head, do you know any projects that had advanced manufacturing that didn't require the trailer parking storage? Just because of my initial research, I was not able to locate any.
Oh, that didn't require? Say it again.
Require.
Yeah.
Advanced manufacturing with the trailer parking.
Yeah, I think it's smart to have it in there, especially when we're trying to recruit companies. And part of the business of an advanced manufacturer is a warehouse function and moving goods in and out. And so, you know, that part of it and having flexibility onsite and some space for that, I do think is smart. And that's, you know, that's thinking about our experience the last ten years. We're approaching things differently now even versus the San Jose project, which I believe we started in 2012. And that flexibility is paramount in our mind.
Okay. And again, the reason I brought that up is I understand that there's a need for flexibility to try to, you know, bring big businesses or certain businesses that you did not expect to come, et cetera, and market yourself. But when I looked at other comparable manufacturing or advanced manufacturing facilities and their conceptual designs, I don't know how they're marketed, but in those conceptual designs, I did not see any of those large tractor trailer parkings. And the other question that we're just brought up, and I wanted to understand a little bit further, was, you know, you were talking about making changes to those large tractor trailer parkings. Should they not need them and just have them installed because it's a little bit easier and easier to do and to market? Can you talk a little bit about the costs that you're talking about of changing those tractor trailer parkings into vehicle parking spots?
Ideally, you plan for that upfront, and you make that adjustment prior to start a construction. Part of that is a sequencing question for Tom. Tom's built every project that we've had in Northern California. And so, you know, how this, how we would anticipate this unfolding based on other projects in the market is we would expect interest in the project as we break ground. And as construction progresses, that's where companies know it's for real. They know there's a timeline. As I mentioned earlier, the management teams can make a decision, notify employees and say, okay, we're going to make a change. We want to go to that modern building in Morgan Hill versus stay in our likely old, you know, obsolete building to the north. And that's a likely scenario. So I think that's an important dynamic. I think your other point is a good one. And to finish that thought, as you get interest, ideally, there's room to make that change. That company tells you, we have, you know, X hundred, you know, we want this building and it's two hundred and fifty employees or five hundred employees, and you can make that adjustment before you put it in. But some of that, I think, can be, in terms of a parking layout, can be adjusted after the fact, you know, and it might not be a terrible burden, but ideally, you catch it before that. The other point that you're making, I think, is a good one in that a lot of manufacturing companies may not require that storage. But from what we're trying to do, and when companies don't necessarily think three, four years out, we need to plan for that in case they do need it. And then make that change if we can get them in sequence early enough, if that makes sense.
Okay. So is there a reason why some of these advanced manufacturing facilities that have been developed for, say, five, ten, fifteen years still do not show those needs for those tractor trailers? Because, I mean, again, I'm not trying to, you know, put you on the spot or anything, but I'm just trying to understand. Because for me, I think it's a big distinguishing factor between what the needs might be for a distribution center versus what might be an advanced manufacturing, right? Advanced manufacturing requiring vital loading docks. Distribution center is also requiring vital loading docks as well as substantial trailer parking.
Sorry. Yeah, I think we might start to deviate a little bit here if we're asking the applicant to comment on another project. So I think to move forward in the interest of the conversation, it sounds like that's a choice to show flexibility and capacity at this point. Would that be fair?
I think that's totally fair. And I think it's a business-to-business situation, you know, on what their process is.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. I think with that, yes, quickly, and then we have a lot of speakers that we need to go through, so.
Do you know what your anticipated absorption rate is for this project?
Can you define what you mean by that?
As far as how long do you think you're going to have, is it going to take to have tenants in all these buildings?
Part of that, what we often see, and getting back to that Draxel Meyer example, it's often the case that we put significant investment inside the building and often the case that tenants put their own investment into the building. And so when you, in an advanced manufacturing product, it can take longer to build out that interior. So that prolongs it a little bit versus, you know, a different type of use. So we make, you know, we can make projections on that. We usually execute, you know, we are usually executing that interior construction as well and sequencing that with tenants. Sometimes they self-perform. But, you know, we try to plan conservatively. We try to be conservative about our job numbers. You know, that's our nature. So we do leave, you know, what we think is a conservative amount of time to fill a project. But we would expect to see interest, you know, shortly after the start of construction.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much for answering those final questions. With that, we'll start going with public comment. Before I do, Jen, I just very quickly, I just want to reiterate to, please state as close as possible to a three minutes. Again, we have the three lights up here. When you see the red, just please wrap up your time. If you have, you want to donate your time, as it were, to somebody else to speak a little bit longer on your behalf, please let us know that. We'll allocate extra time to somebody else in your group. And then finally, everybody's going to get their three minutes, but if you are in agreement with previous statements and you don't want to just reiterate what's been said, please feel free to just state your agreement or disagreement with whatever the statement was. And, you know, maybe we can save some time, because I now think we have over twenty-five speakers, so, correct? All right. So with that, we'll dive right in.
Carol Corsi, followed by Skip Horston.
Just wait till you get that mic on so we can all hear you.
Yes, thank you.
I broke my ankle two, my ankle two days ago, and I'm in a lot of pain, but it was important for me to be here. And one of the things that I noticed through all of this, with all of the talks from these people, is they never talked about human beings. It was all about business. It was all about making money. It was all about parking places, but nothing about human beings. And I don't hear how this is going to help people who live here. They talk about people coming in to get jobs. They talk about all sorts of things. And one of the things that was really incredibly interesting to me is they didn't show Westmont. I don't know if anybody knows what Westmont is. Westmont is a senior facility right across the street from where they're going to build this. We got no notices about this, nothing. I just heard about it through next door. So, you know, that's illegal to do that, worse than what, four hundred feet from them. My husband resides there in the memory care section. There are one hundred and thirty-five residents that live there. Some of them are independent, some are assisted, and some of them are memory care. We're all going to get to that place sometime, and I'd like to see more humanity dealt with people who are already having problems. If you put this facility right next to that, it's going to be noisy for them. They're not going to be able to use their patios because of the deuce of the fumes. Also, for people in the town, congestion on one-on-one, I don't know why they would put it here where the freeway narrows and not do it somewhere farther down where it's already narrow, because to come off of there to get to Westmont is not an easy thing now. And it's going to be worse when there's all those trucks there going in and out. Plus, the doors are going to be very noisy for these people who have been contributing members to our society, have done their best, and they deserve a peaceful later years, as all of us do. The congestion on Cochran has already been a problem because of the other development that went on. Also, when you come off the freeway, this would be a very poor representation for what Morgan Hill is about. You come up and you see a huge distribution center. I don't care what kind of art they put on the side of it. It's still a distribution center. So my concern is that our family members deserve a peaceful place to live out the remainder of their lives. Westmont was there far before this came up and that she had been considered. They didn't even show it in any of the pictures. What's the view Westmont going to have of this? How close is Westmont going to be to this? Someday, you may be living there. I'm sure you don't want to have to deal with this. I certainly don't. I'm there every day watching out for my husband because he has dementia. So every day, I'm there for three hours. I don't want to deal with that. I'd like to be able to take him out on the patio, spend some time outside. They won't be able to do that. It's going to be too noisy, too many fumes. So I feel like this has been very disrespectful to the residents of Morgan Hill, no matter what age you are, because I didn't hear anything about how the residents were dealt with or considered in any of these plans. It was all about business and Tramacrow, and I have no respect for them.
All right, folks. So unfortunately, the applause is cutting into her time, and we're now a little bit over, so if you have, please wrap up your thoughts.
Oh, sure. I moved here twenty years ago because it was a small town. It was wonderful. In the last five years, there's been so much development here, it's really hard for senior citizens to park or get around or have facilities. There's hardly any handicap parking downtown, and now there are any in the Westmont area.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Carol. Just as a follow-up to one of the comments here, I know that the representative from Westmont has reached out to city staff, and they are currently working on setting up a meeting to go speak with you.
Right, I know that. But, you know, I don't see how this could pass the EIR with that kind of thing going on, fumes that are going to affect these people, haven't been noticed, all that. I don't know how you can pass an EIR honestly, and we have enough dishonesty in our government right now.
Thank you for your comment.
Remember, no booing. With all due respect, I kind of think that I just saw a rerun of Forrest Gump, because we're getting presented a box of chocolates and we have no idea what's in it. If you remember that famous line from that, it was, "Run, Forrest, run." And I think that's what we need to do. There's, first of all, like, a thousand jobs to, that it's going to create. Are they really going to come from Morgan Hill, or is it going to be more traffic coming up from Hollister, Gilroy, Fremont, Melrose? That wasn't really addressed. What was addressed, it would be seven hundred more cars in the parking lot, so those seven hundred cars will have to be on our freeway. I saw one stat in the handout, don't know how valid that was, that there could be, if our, if our truck, tractor trailers, there's up to three hundred and fifty a day coming and going. And if all of you have been on Cochran, or one-on-one, I should say, at five o'clock at night, at seven-thirty in the morning, whatever, there's times when you couldn't fit one tractor trailer there, let alone three hundred and fifty coming and going. In all respect to Ben, I would think, you know, with all your studies, that you would be able to pull out what the average manufacturing cost would be excluding executives. I don't think anybody's concerned about somebody that's making a million dollars, that's a CFO or CEO or something. I think we're talking about the average worker, and I don't think, like, what's brought up here before, that that's going to afford a home here in Morgan Hill. And if it's a warehouse-type thing, a lot of people loading trucks or whatever, that's the big thing I think we're missing here. We're all talking about the traffic, is what we, I think, most of us are concerned about the pollution, the congestion, and the traffic that this is going to bring. And so all the numbers, like this speaker said, about the buildings and the design and all that stuff, not really interested in that. I don't think most of us are, because something will be built there, some industrial building will be built there, we understand that. But it was said that, well, it's not really going to be a distribution center because our demographics aren't good and it's not what we want. Fremont has ten times us, all that kind of stuff. If it's not going to be a distribution center, why is those sketches show up to two hundred and two truck days? And these aren't Ford one-fifty trucks, these are tractor trailers. Okay? So they don't know who they're going to sell leases to. I guarantee, as was brought up earlier, if Amazon came to these guys tomorrow, they'd be buying them good at Raisies on the Beach right now, because they'd sign it immediately, immediately, like was brought up. Amazon is in Tracy, that's the biggest distribution center. This would be a golden thing for something like that. So if it's not going to be a distribution center, why are there two hundred and two days? Because we don't know it's going to go there, but once it's approved, and they'll all say, wow, that's going to be the sweetest deal they can make, it's going to be a distribution center or something very similar to that. So again, and also, before my light's almost on, it is very important to, as I'm worried about traffic and congestion, is the fact that in the last meeting here, as you know, Governor Newsom has now changed your planning commission, and the density that he wants in Morgan Hill and all other cities now is basically doubled. So whatever your planning was, of how many units are going to be built in Morgan Hill in the next five years, I think Governor Newsom wants three point five million units here, all of a sudden, your plan went out the window because he usurped your authority, and now he's going to double the density. So if we're doubling the density, how many more cars are going to be in Morgan Hill? How much more traffic? How much more congestion? So with that, I yield.
Good evening. My name is Joe Berenowski. Chair of boards and commissioners, I appreciate the fairness and professionalism by which I knew you would conduct this meeting. I'm here, Jeanette Napoli, Sonia Seidel, and Kathy Berenowski have asked me, I promise not to use all that time, but maybe just an extra minute. I am particularly wish that I could talk a whole bunch, my whole time, about the issues that you were speaking of. I would especially like to talk for a long time about the notion that conceptual plans don't turn into reality. The developer has an industrial investment portfolio brochure with thirty-eight projects on it, including the Livermore project on the screen, including midpoint. I think it'd be a fair request, you know, those all had preliminary project plans. I've been going through them, and guess what? The preliminary plans, they look exactly what's getting built. I haven't gone through all thirty-eight, but the developer can, you know, in an hour or two, get those together for you and take satellite images and see how that turned out, okay? The second thing is, Commissioner Habib, I think you're asking some very good questions. I would just ask you also to focus on the truck dock density. These buildings like this and proposed in Morgan Hill are approaching two docks per ten thousand square feet. Compare that to real advanced manufacturing, it's at least twice. The other point, you're absolutely right. I'll give you a current example. Look at McCarthy Creekside Industrial Park. There's a semi-advanced manufacturer there called Apple. They just, aren't even moved into that building. These are brand-new buildings. Go look at how many trailer parking spots there are there. The second lease was for SF Motors, an advanced electric battery manufacturer. They don't have any trailer spots either. And the other key thing is, look at the configuration of the docks. This is a so-called cross-stocking, where there's docks very symmetrical at two sides of the building. That's for a very good reason. That's because how high-speed fulfillment centers work these days. So you're on the right track. But unfortunately, the applicant and the city like to talk about myth versus facts, and this is a critical topic for understanding what is happening. A few of the many facts regarding how the participants of this project, Tramacrow, the city, David J. Powers, and Hexicon, have grossly failed to live up to the true purpose and intent of the SEQA and the planned development process, namely, to encourage public participation and transparency in the decision-making process, are included in this presentation for your reference and example. If you have any doubts about what is stated, everything comes from publicly available records. I urge you to go check them for yourself. But I want to spend the rest of my time talking about two myths that absolutely need to be debunked. The first myth is that anyone opposed to this project doesn't respect that Tramacrow, as a property owner, has a right to this process. We completely understand that and have been vocal advocates that the process be followed. No one's asked for this meeting to happen more than I have, and I've come to your meetings and been doing that for months. But every process depends on the transparency and accuracy of all the participants. And what we've seen is the deck is stacked against anyone who believes this project is not the best use of that property to create high-quality, sustainable jobs, support our existing businesses, protect the environment, and preserve our quality of life. Citizens have legitimate reasons based on recent, relevant, in-context, documented actions of those participants to be concerned that this process would not be fair or unbiased. Usually, the only recourse in those situations is through the courts. In this case, for example, the SEQA executive team even will tell you that SEQA is a self-executing statute enforced as necessary by the public through litigation and threats thereof. That's what SEQA will tell you. SEQA and the EIR process are very complicated, so this litigate to entrust compliance places a very, very high burden on the public, and participants know that. Luckily, there is a better way for this solution. The second myth is that no matter how many people get involved and advocate for responsible growth, the city council can do whatever they want, and there is nothing Morgan Hill residents can do to stop this misguided project. My main reason for speaking here tonight is, do not believe that. Do not believe that. Citizens have the right to use initiative in the referendum process as embedded in the California Constitution. Citizens are considered co-equal with locally adaptive legislative bodies. In our case, that means city council. We will continue to use our voices and hope that were heard. We'll continue to promote responsible growth, and we will exercise our right to use initiative process to legislate for the public benefit of Morton Hill and beyond. Some proponents of this mega-distribution project have perhaps intentionally promoted this myth by suggesting that the citizen's right to enact or repeal legislation depends on somehow a law being violated. That's just another myth. And I'd like to end my discussion with a question to the city planning commissioner and to the applicants. So do you support the citizen's right to do what we believe if the city council may not do? And does Tramacrow respect the rights of Morgan Hill citizens, as they want their rights as property owners to be respected? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Joe, can I ask you a question?
Joe, if you don't mind, just hold on for a second.
Joe, just a quick question. Thanks, thanks for that. I know you represent quite a group of people, so I very appreciate you coming up, saying what you need to say. It's a very important process for us, but do you have any sense of what's acceptable in this planned development here? What's an acceptable use? Like, what's acceptable, what's not? Can you be maybe just a bit quicker? Because we're just trying to guide everybody here as to, we have to give some guidance. What would you say would be acceptable?
Well, I think I stated what our key priorities are. Sustainable, high-quality jobs. Respect the local businesses. I think you're going to hear some speakers talk about what that really means. Integrity of the environment. And these slides that are showing where this commercial supposedly would support any of this, it needs to be looked at carefully, but I will just say that we would not, I think there are advanced, I mean, there are advanced manufacturing facilities, I certainly think Gillick as an example, Apple, other ones I mentioned, would certainly fit that bill. Again, if you look at the buildings that they're in, I admit Gillick is an exception, those buildings don't look like these buildings. You will not have that high truck density. They don't need to be cross-stocked, and you won't have that many parking spaces. So we're not against development in this, on this property, and we know that something's going to go in there, Commissioner Downing. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
My name is Terry Williams, and I've been in front of this board before. Thank you, guys, for putting up with what the community tries to want. And in saying that, I believe it's this committee's responsibility to do everything they can to protect the quality of life of the people in this community. You've given a lot of numbers. You've given a lot of numbers on analysis, size numbers, job numbers, salary numbers, parking numbers, distribution numbers, cost numbers. Do you have any quality-of-life numbers? All of the people here moved hoping, no, not even hoping, never envisioning that there would be this unknown phenomenon that's going to happen within our community. And my belief is it's you guys that need to protect us from any type of unknown bad. And I don't know how else to put that. I don't know what could be going in there, but my belief is you've had a lot more experience at what kind of buildings and what kind of businesses and what kinds of things have happened within this community than I have. And when you ask somebody like me, what else would I put in there? I'm going to turn it back on you. Listen, guys, it's your responsibility. You were voted into this, and you accepted the responsibility when you took that. So I'll give the rest of my time to, who is it over there that needed more time? Whoever needed more time.
That's right. We'll know the other minute left. Thank you very much.
Followed by Miguel Jimenez.
That was Suzie was the first name?
Suzie.
First, I'd like to thank the planning commission for having this forum for residents to give their opinion and make statements. My name is Miguel Jimenez, and in 2014, my wife Suzie and I bought our home in Mataria Development, which is part of the Mission Ranch neighborhood. We were well aware of the Morgan Hill 2035 general plan and understood the surrounding area would be developed over time. However, the proposed development by Trammell Crowe would require rezoning the land, which would allow for over a million-square-foot industrial development, which includes over 192 loading docks and 300 semi-trucks. At the community meeting held here on May 21st, we heard from Trammell Crowe representatives that a tenant for the space had not been procured, so the exact use of the development couldn't be determined. I understand the economic value of optionality and obtaining the approval of the site design as submitted would allow for a number of different tenants and uses. However, any tenant that would require the utilization of so many loading docks and semi-truck parking spaces does not belong in Morgan Hill, especially so close to Live Oak High School, the Westmont Senior Living Facility, and a large number of homes. My wife and I were so concerned about the proposed development and potential deviation from the Morgan Hill 2035 general plan that we took it upon ourselves to make 1,500 copies of the notice from the city for this meeting and hand deliver them to every single house in the Mission Ranch, in the Mission Ranch, Alicante, Wisteria, Coyote Estates, and surrounding neighborhoods. We had the opportunity to discuss this proposed development with numerous neighbors. One thing was abundantly clear: no one wants a warehouse or distribution center in town. I urge the members of city council and the planning commission to focus on the proposal submitted by Trammell Crowe and not on the hopes and aspirations about a certain type of tenant that may occupy the space. The proposal submitted by the developers unacceptable to the community because it could be used as a warehouse or distribution center. We've also heard the community meeting in May that the proposed submitted by Trammell Crowe is a worst-case scenario. How do we prevent the worst-case scenario from becoming a reality? How do we protect the residents of Morgan Hill from an increase in pollution, traffic, noise, and environmental degradation that a distribution center would bring? How do we preserve the integrity of the community's agricultural history, in particular nearby Andy's Orchard and the Gruyere Moenery? How do we make sure the children at Live Oak High School, the under-construction Borello School, and the seniors at Westmont aren't exposed to all the potential negative externalities of this development? How do we communicate to the developer that the worst-case scenario is not acceptable to the residents of Morgan Hill? How do we ensure that this site does not become a distribution center? It's simple. The city council representing the residents of Morgan Hill should not approve this site as proposed by Trammell Crowe. Alternatively, Trammell Crowe can submit a request or proposed development that does not require distribution and warehousing. One statement made by Trammell Crowe that I found particularly insightful was that they could not, they indicated that capital markets would not fund this project unless warehousing distribution was allowed as part of the development. That gives me an indication of the level of confidence that investors have in this being something other than a distribution and warehouse center. Thank you for your time.
I'm Suzie Jimenez, and I'm a resident of Mission Ranch at Tarramia. In February of this year, the city council adopted Sustainable Morgan Hill. The vision is to sustain a safe, inclusive, socially responsible, environmentally conscious, and economically sound community. We strongly oppose the Morgan Hill Technology Park project as it does not align with the Sustainable Morgan Hill vision. In addition, the Morgan Hill Technology Park project runs counter to the ongoing priorities of the Sustainable Morgan Hill, which include protecting the environment, supporting our youth, seniors, and entire community, preserving and cultivating public trust, and preserving our cultural history. I ask the members of our city government to keep their promise of Sustainable Morgan Hill to the residents of this wonderful city and say no to this proposed industrial development. Thank you.
Thanks for listening. Tonight, Trammell Crowe has shown a beautiful PowerPoint presentation talking about advanced manufacturing, and they didn't actually specify midpoint, but they had on their PowerPoint, midpoint at 237. And for those of you who don't know, that's in San Jose, and Trammell Crowe did build that facility. They want the planning commission and the public to believe that the demand is low for distribution centers in the Bay Area. They don't make financial sense as lease rates for advanced manufacturing buildings are more than distribution centers. However, the plans for Morgan Hill are not representative of advanced manufacturing buildings and clearly show that the proposed design is a distribution center. Now, I want to circle back to midpoint at 237 in San Jose because reading about that really impacted my thoughts on this whole process. Because guess what they wanted to originally build at midpoint at 237? Well, you guessed it. They wanted to build a distribution center. And on June 9th of 2014, just prior to San Jose City Council vote at midpoint 237, Trammell Crowe's senior VP of John Greer wrote to Mayor Chuck Reed, "Our first proposal was to build a very large warehouse and truck distribution center with 307 loading docks that would have very intensive traffic activity," truck, excuse me, "but the community expressed significant concern about this." So due to time constraints, I'm not going to read his entire letter that he wrote, but I do have a copy here if you'd like to see it. In the end, Trammell Crowe changed their project completely because of the public outcry to be a combination of advanced manufacturing and office R&amp;D. One community member here in Morgan Hill actually drove up to the site, and he counted the loading docks at this advanced manufacturing facility, and he counted 12. The bottom line is that Trammell Crowe is unequivocally trying to build the same distribution center they couldn't pass in San Jose. There's a lot of real data that shows both advanced manufacturing and distribution centers are in high demand here, but they're built differently. Please don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
I have been given three minutes by James Aiko. I won't take six, but that's what I've been given. I want to thank you all for asking absolutely great questions. This is not a rubber stamp. You guys have been doing your job, and you've done it well. I really appreciate that. We move down to Morgan Hill from Almeden 14 years ago because Morgan Hill was an absolutely great town. And I feel like Trammell Crowe is trying to take that away from us. They are going to create problems, not only traffic, not only air quality, noise, and everything else that comes along with a distribution center. And you all recognize that this is a distribution center. It's not a technology center. It's a distribution center. And I'm glad you all recognize this. The gentleman from Trammell Crowe said that the buildings are going to be 300 feet away from Highway 101. I live 800 feet away from the proposed development. That means that I'm going to be 500 feet away from all these semi-trucks. What's that going to do to my health? My daughters live in Morgan Hill. Their families live in Morgan Hill. What is it going to do to them? The only businesses that are going to want to move into Morgan Hill are doctors who are pulmonologists because it's going to kill us all. It will kill us all. We didn't move to Fremont. We didn't move to the port of Oakland. We moved to Morgan Hill because of the quality of life, and our quality of life is in danger. It's in danger because of big money. You can ask these gentlemen from Trammell Crowe, how many live in Morgan Hill? I don't think you're going to get anybody who lives in Morgan Hill. Would they care what happens to our quality of life? I mean, it's absurd to think that this is happening. You mentioned, this lady mentioned Paramount being so many square feet. That's not a business or a facility that is 500 feet away from me. So, I mean, why? Why is this being put so close to a housing development? With Mission Ranch and Tarramia, we have other very expensive developments that are very close to this proposed development. It shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. I've heard the word flexibility, flexible flexibility. That is a euphemism for doing whatever they want. That's pure circle. Oh, we'd like the flexibility. Huh? What does that mean? You know what it means. I don't have to explain it to you. It means they want to do what they want, and they want a carte blanche, a carte blanche to do whatever they want. I don't think that's acceptable. If you deny the zoning change, there can't be a bait and switch. You put amendments on any kind of zoning approval, they're going to find a way around it. If you deny the zoning change, you will effectively limit what they can do to us as a city. An interest in this development. It just doesn't make sense that anybody would want to, who lives in this city, would want to do this to our great little town. Thank you very much.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I also want to applaud all of you for your many, very astute questions. It was really inspiring to hear. But now, even though I'm facing you, I would like to direct my comments to Trammell Crowe. Jenny, just how stupid do you think we are? We know what you build. 38 recent projects listed in your brochure, the vast majority distribution centers. You swoop into cities, build, lease, and then sell to large real estate investment or management firms as quickly as possible. You don't stick around long enough to see the damage you wrought on a community, the choking traffic, incessant noise, and putrid pollution that you leave behind. Shame on you for telling us you're building a technology center. With 202 loading dock doors and 303 parking spaces for semi-trucks, those certainly aren't bocce ball courts for high-tech employees. And we know what advanced manufacturing looks like. Paramount is a good example.
Deborah, sorry. Can I just have you turn around and face us and direct the comments to the commission? Appreciate it. And if I could just remind everybody, please, everybody in the audience, I understand that there's a lot at stake here. I've asked you now several times to please refrain from cheering too enthusiastically or worse, booing. Please allow everybody their time to speak, but also, please, let's just be respectful of one another. So please address your comments if you don't mind.
All right. Thank you. But please realize that I'm not speaking to you. Okay? I'm not.
We understand.
Okay, good. Okay, so.
That's the mechanics of how public comment works.
Okay, so let me continue on with, we know what advanced manufacturing looks like. Paramount is a good example. And what you are building isn't anything like Paramount. Instead, it is merely an exact replication of the Tesla distribution center in Livermore. And again, I just have to say, how stupid do you think we are? You paid $31 million for land that was valued at $6 million after being in backdoor talks with city officials for at least 18 months prior to purchasing. Then as soon as it closed escrow in January, you applied to change the general plan and zoning. What business pays five times more for a piece of property that isn't even zoned so they can build what they want? That makes absolutely no sense. You know, I don't want to think that promises were made to you. I just don't know why you would do that. Okay, so, here's the thing. We don't fail for deceitful business tactics here in Morgan Hill or manipulative PR firms. We, the citizens of Morgan Hill, spent too much time contributing to the development of our general plan and zoning code, and we will not let you change it. We care about our town, and we will not let you destroy it. So you might as well cut your losses and sell that property to someone who really cares about our town, or you can just build what the current zoning allows because we will not let you change the zoning code to build a mega-distribution center, and that is our right as citizens because we are not that stupid.
Before we, I just, I want to be very clear. Public comment is for you to provide your But if I could just ask you to please, let's all just follow the rules and have a civil discourse. All right?
David Wenz?
Good evening. My name is David Wenz. I'm 81 years of age, and for 35 of those years, I've been a resident of Morgan Hill. We left, my family and I, left San Jose to escape the big city. It appears that Morgan Hill city officials and staff, at this time, are trying to turn our pleasant city into a developer's playground. I want to raise this opportunity to admonish personally Ms. Jennifer Carmen and her department, who, in their misguided efforts to increase the economic base of the city, is doing so at the cost of community aesthetics with little past regard for private citizen input. Most members perceive Morgan Hill as a haven from the hectic turmoil of Silicon Valley. The intrusion of the massive Trammell Crowe planning development, almost a half mile of three tilt-up warehouse industrial-style buildings, hundreds of parked and moving semis, big smoking trailer trucks massively waiting to load and unload at approximately 200 loading docks, all situated prominently in the northern gateway to our pleasant city. This will instantly change any perception that people had when they moved here. Noise and toxic air pollution must be considered in unbiased, comprehensive study. Highway 101 during morning and evening commutes is really bad. It could be that way almost every day, considering the added increase that the soon-to-be-completed phyllosco across the freeway will soon start. Visitors driving into our city from the north to enjoy the growth, the foods, the wine, the community, and sports experiences that we offer will instantly be turned off by what they see. This could be just the opposite of what our residents and merchants want others to come here to look for. Families seeking a place to relocate will think quickly about looking somewhere else. The vision and community characters of Morgan Hill will be changed forever. I urge the planning commission and our city officials and staff to think carefully about their responsibilities to our community and not consider advising or trying to make any changes to Morgan Hill's existing general plan or present zoning regulations to benefit in any way this Trammell Crowe-proposed development plan. Thank you. Oh, I'm going to also add that most of us here today that are currently opposed to this plan, live, buy things, and vote in Morgan Hill. Thank you.
All right, chair, for the next speaker. Just a point of order. Can we just again remind the speakers, we're asking to address the planning commission, the seven people here. So when you're addressing, address the seven people that are here. Can we do that?
That's, yeah, understood.
Rick Kent?
Good evening, planning commission, city staff, and concerned residents. My name is Rick Kent. We've talked a bit about Paramount Corporation this afternoon, or tonight. I'm the CFO of Paramount Corporation, who employs over 400 people here in Morgan Hill and currently is looking for another 50. We design and manufacture medical equipment and life science instrumentation. That includes robotic surgery, DNA sequencing, and diagnosis for cancer and other diseases. We are your prototypical advanced manufacturing company. I'm here to represent Paramount's point of view on this project and my boss, the CEO, and the board of directors. Additionally, I'm president of the Mission Ranch Homeowners Association, which is the neighborhood which is the closest to this development on the corner of Mission View and Cochran Road, and there are 328 homes in that development. I'm also an active member of Engage Morgan Hill, and I'm also a member of the Morgan Hill Chamber of Commerce. Obviously, I'm here to express my concerns and Paramount's concerns about the Trammell Crowe development and the Morgan Hill Technology Park. Currently, what's on the website has 192 docks. I've heard 192 to 202, but has a number of docks, has at least another 300 parking spaces for 18-wheelers. The planning commission and the city council have heard a substantial uproar about this development. Do we want a distribution center to be the gateway to Morgan Hill? Do we want to be the reputation of being the distribution center for Silicon Valley? Today's retail and business environment demands these type of developments that are close to population centers, but it does not belong in Morgan Hill, and especially does not belong on the east side of 101 on Cochran Road. Cochran Road is the home to over 1,000 homes. We realize the value of those homes are between $1,200,000 and $2,000,000 plus. What's that, a billion five of property value that we're going to harm with a distribution center and trucks that come to it? The general plan talks about an overarching goal is to maintain Morgan Hill's family-friendly character and a strong sense of community through thoughtful land use planning and being a leader in environmental stewardship. It talks about delighting residents and villagers and helping local businesses to thrive and promote Morgan Hill as a great place to live and visit. I fail to see how this Paramount Crowe development advances any of these goals. Paramount supports economic development and high-paying jobs. Paramount does not support a truck stop with low-paying jobs and most likely a highly automated distribution center. Paramount is an advanced manufacturing company, has a facility which is 32 feet high for its parapet, has four docks for 150,000 square feet. How do we maintain our commitment to economic growth while maintaining Morgan Hill as a great place to live? That's simple in my view. Limit the height of the buildings, and I will admit they have taken the heights down from what the original plans were, but also limit the number of docks per square foot. To me, four docks for 150,000 square feet is plenty. We are currently looking at investigating a facility that would be 250,000 square feet. We are talking about six docks, and that's all we need. I would like to ask the planning commission and then the city council to work with residents and businesses in the community to make sure that this project works for the betterment of Morgan Hill. And I thank you for your time.
I do apologize for the pronunciation of this name. Logan?
I'm going to defer my testimony. It's all been said beautifully by all my colleagues, so thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Alan Ambrose?
Hello, good evening. First of all, I'll try not to repeat what's already been said because I can't speak as eloquently as all the speakers that came before me. I do want to address Trammell Crowe for one thing. I feel bad for these guys. They're getting roasted, and they don't have a stiff drink in front of them. But I will be happy to meet them at the Running Shop &amp; Hops and buy them a beer because I'm sure they're great guys. There's no reason to be really personal about this. A couple of points I want to make. It seems like we're trying to resettle something here that's already been settled. And I'll point to the leader of this city, our mayor, because on March of this year, in his State of the City address, Mayor Constantine talked about the zoning code and the general plan. And here are his exact quotes. "The result of endless hours of work by many of our residents that came together to help us develop our general plan, our zoning code, and other guiding documents, and to continue to maintain our community's character and grow in a smart and sustainable way, we must honor and implement these guiding documents that took hundreds of community hours and represent the goals of our community." It's already been decided what Morgan Hill wants. We have a general plan. We have zoning codes. There is no reason to accept a request by a developer of this nature to change those zoning codes to suit their needs, their desires. The city has already told you. The city has already told the city council what they want. My head's spinning. I don't know about you guys, but I'm spinning with CEQUAs and EIRs and PDs and zonings and, you know, it's just crazy stuff. But I dug into the documents of the city, into your documents, and I came up with the light industrial combined use designation. So there is a list of what can be designated in a PD or a zone. In here, it says manufacturing, research, and development is a P, which means permitted. Trammell Crowe, and guess what? They can build a manufacturing site. They can build a research and development site. Love that. There's some great jobs there. That's a great attraction for our city. Just remove the warehouse. It's very simple. We don't have to spend a whole lot of time debating it. We don't have to spend a lot of time in what's large, what's small, what's permitted, what's not permitted. It's in your documents. It's already permitted. That's all. Thank you.
Hopefully, I won't have to use all six. Thank you, planning commission, for your very thoughtful and honest questions. I'm quite surprised and pleased, especially Mohammed. I really did like your thoughtful questions. So what I wanted to ask is, I would say, please correct me if I'm wrong. So during a neighborhood meeting that I attended, and I know I'm not supposed to turn around, but this is for Ben, he made the following statement. He said, "We are not discounting the possibility that a warehousing unit will be attracted to the Morgan Hill site for whatever reason, and those jobs are paying $64,000. I heard we'll talk about jobs, but I didn't hear him talk about warehouse jobs." That was discussed at the meeting at Jackson Oaks. So I'm not sure if I just didn't hear it or it just wasn't brought up or addressed this evening. He also continued to say, "We blended it on a kind of 70-30% basis, 70% probability of getting advanced manufacturing and 30% chance of getting more like a warehousing, logistics-type job." So I'm hearing two different stories. I'm hearing that there's a possibility, and they can't deny it, that there will be a warehouse put up there. So if that's a fact or a possibility, I'd like to ask the planning commission to ensure that it's 0%, that no warehouse gets put up there through the zoning. And, you know, I'm not really, I've been reading the zoning laws, and I'm not very familiar with them, and they are quite elaborate and confusing for just a regular citizen. But I'm asking you as a commission to just, please, you know, prohibit them from building a warehouse. And I think that'll solve our problems, and I think other residents have said that. And so I'm just going to go to my slides. I don't know how to scroll through them. Is it just, okay. So what I've pulled out here is, this is a picture of, sorry, my glasses.
Can I ask you, please, just keep the mic next to you so everybody can hear you. Thank you.
This is a picture of Morton Commerce Center, and it is a manufacturing center. I looked at how many truck docks it had. It had a total of, in all four buildings, sorry, it had a total of, like, 52, 50 of 52. So still a lot, but this is a true technology warehouse. Then I went to, this is the plans of the Morgan Hill proposed site by Trammell Crowe, and it's, it is designed by the same company that did the Oak Creek, I'm sorry, what is it called? Oak Business Park, which is in Livermore that they were discussing today. I mean, it's the same exact company. It looks like they just kind of overlaid the plans. I went there, and there are many, many truck docks. I've looked up, this is the Tesla plant he was talking about. I looked it up, and the Tesla plant, this is an overview, an overhead aerial shot of the Tesla plant, and it's listed on Google as a distribution center that's open 24 hours. So to me, these kind of facts that I'm trying to hobble together are telling me that they're saying one thing and planning for another. Thanks. Hopefully, that wasn't six minutes.
Thank you.
Oscar Correa?
My name's Oscar Correa. Thank you for the time to speak tonight. So I think many of Morgan Hill residents, as everyone can tell now, is very concerned about distribution centers becoming the fabric of Morgan Hill. And along with that, I think it's, a lot of the interest is around the number of trucks that this will bring to town. And Trammell Crowe has presented that we should be looking at midpoint at 237 to see what they want to do at the Morgan Hill Tech Center. And so I looked at the San Jose Planning Commission and their website with their analysis of midpoint at 237, and what you see here is that they have 78 loading docks. This was in the proposal. And then the city estimated that, or the planning commission estimated that it was going to create 156 truck trips per day to that site. Now, if you just scale it up to what they want to do at Morgan Hill Tech Center, where they have 192 loading docks, maybe 202 now, but that would create an average truck trips per day of 384. Now, it's just simple, just scaling up. Now, that also can't be analyzed in isolation because across the freeway now, we have another distribution center that's already being built. And my understanding is that site did not have to go through planning commission review. And I'm not sure why that is, but the city has estimated that there's only going to be five to eight truck trips per day to that location. But if you were to scale up from, again, the midpoint at 237 data, you would see that it would be 112. So that's a large discrepancy, and so where the truth lies, I'm not sure. But we hope that the planning commission can investigate and shed light on how many trucks will actually be visiting Morgan Hill, not only for the Morgan Hill Tech Center, but also for the Shoe Palace Distribution Center, because both those locations will be hitting the same Cochran exit, which could be a lot of trucks. If this is anywhere close, it could be 500 to 700 trucks trips per day hitting the one Cochran exit. So just hope the planning commission investigates this and looks at Trammell Crowe's plans and proposals and not aspirational taglines. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Georgia. I grew up in the area, you know, born and raised, yay. And I'm blue collar. I grew up blue collar. I grew up blue collar, I am blue collar. I probably will always be blue collar. And it sucks because it's hard, I gotta tell you. So the jobs, like, distribution, I've worked in a distribution center, and it's not a good job. My cousin works in one right now because he's 18, and it's all he can really get while he goes to community college. And they're just taking advantage of him because he's 18, and he'll eat like a pizza, and then he can lift like 500 boxes, right? So anyway, I gotta say, I know I'm like all over the place, but I just want to say that that's really hard. Like, it's mind-boggling to think that a distribution center is a good job because it is not a good job. Maybe the person managing it is a good job, but the people working in it, it's not a good job. So I have a point of back injury from working in distribution. So that's my first point. And, you know, there's that group, the Morgan Hill Responsible Growth Coalition, and they've been doing great things, really notifying and sharing information and providing Morgan Hill with the things that they need to know regarding this project. And I think it's really ironic that homeboy there is wearing one of their buttons, and he works for Trammell Crowe. Like, that's, that's like irony to the 10th degree. So ironic. And then we got the other guy back here who's like falling asleep too. So I don't know. It's just really amusing to me. It's like, not only is he having irony, but he's just like totally ignoring everything that we're saying because he's on his phone the whole time. I'm just like, yeah, you guys really care about us. And so, you know, they had that slide up there that said, you know, they're going to pay the city $13 million, and then we're going to get $700,000 annually. Like, wow, $13 million? That's not a lot of money, not in this area. If I won a lot of for $13 million, I'd say, yeah, I'd pay off my house, and then I'd still have to work. And so I'm just wondering, is this what Morgan Hill is worth to you guys? $13 million one time, and then $700,000 annually? Is that what these people are worth? Is that what I'm worth? I'm only worth $700,000 annually? Divide that among all of these people, what? That's like a penny. Is that what I'm worth? That's what I want to know. So, and I guess we'll find out soon, right? I'll find out very soon what my 36 years of life in Morgan Hill is worth. Is it worth more than $13 million once and then $700,000 a year? Divided by, what's the population of Morgan Hill? Someone help me. I'm just a dumb girl.
About 48,000.
Forty, 40,000. Wow, so that's, I don't know, like 15 cents. Wow. Super. Thanks, guys. I'm done. I'll give my time to someone else.
Hello. Hi, Commissioners. Nice to see you all again here, talking before you on a totally different subject, as most here in the audience are. One, thank you for taking a very due diligence look at this progress and at this proposed Trammell Crowe and Guy's Distribution Center. I think you've all clearly kind of seen through what is being proposed. I have a couple of questions, actually, that, there are questions to you that may or may not have actually been thought about. One, and it's more of a statement, is the applicant does a really good job of walking around the direct questions, very similar to some politicians and some attorneys. When asked about specific distribution center, some very specific questions about proposed uses and incoming tenants, they do a good job of walking around that. When we look at manufacturing and tech companies and the numbers that Trammell Crowe presents, they didn't show any of the numbers for distribution companies that leased from Trammell Crowe in any of their former cities. They only show data for manufacturing companies. They show great companies like Google and Apple and big manufacturing, but they didn't show any data for any of their distribution companies. And as we've clearly heard, many of the sites that they have produced are being used as distribution, but all of that data has been skewed and left out for the public not to hear. I'd like to know how many of the projects, upon completion, have met or exceeded the job creations based on the numbers presented during the planning phase? So they say these great numbers and $200,000 in salary. When it comes to fruition, and the 30-some projects that have been done through Trammell Crowe in the last number of years, how many of those actually meet or exceed their numbers versus the fluff to get the project through? How many of the loading docks, and I think we've touched on this a little bit, do Apple and Google and some of the other very high-end manufacturing centers have, comparative to the true distribution centers? For projects of this size, what's the minimum number of loading docks needed to meet the capital requirements projects to get a project funded? They've clearly stated multiple times, the capital markets require loading docks and versatility in order to be a funded project. Do they actually require 192? Or is there something less than that? You call it a warehouse and a distribution center, not a manufacturing center, but all the numbers supplied are for manufacturing. Where are the numbers for distribution? I'd like to see the data that supports the claims that most of your projects of like-size, 800,000 square foot and larger, are not distribution centers and are actually manufacturing centers. There should be some statistical data that supports their actual claims. And then before the Planning Commission were to vote on anything, I'd like to see a full CEQA and a traffic survey performed that ensures the traffic study is based on two factors. One, factor of a manufacturing and distribution center. And two, a distribution with low, a manufacturing center with minor distribution, and a distribution center with 192 loading docks. Sorry, I know, the, if Trammell Crowe were to compare the Livermore site to the proposed site here and talk about the number of manufacturing jobs at the Livermore site, then this proposed site is half the size. I'd like to know how many truck bays are in Livermore, and we could equally assume, using their own words, that this is half the size, that we would have half the traffic of the Livermore site. Planning Commission, I know you guys have a really hard job ahead of you. I appreciate the due diligence. Maybe no matter what decision you make, it might be a bad decision, and people might not be happy, but at the end of the day, I appreciate you doing the due diligence and deep dive to try to get to the bottom of it. And please uphold the actual planning zoning and do not allow a distribution center that's being proposed to actually happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Javier?
Come on, give it a second.
Go on, try it.
My name is Javier Chavaria. I've lived here since 1991, moved into the Alicante neighborhood in 2009. And you've asked everyone to address you versus the developers, and I will address you. Because as a resident, I normally don't get out here and come to these meetings because I'd rather be home. But I'm here now because I want to know how you guys ever let this get to this point. Look at the residents. We're all against it. Not one is for it. How do you get to the point, position that you are without nobody putting your feet to the fire and saying, shame on you. Shame on you for not taking action earlier to prevent this from happening. Nobody's asked a question. They ask a lot, they had a lot of stats and a lot of demographics. But their own demographics and their stats look against them. For instance, they said that the vast majority of the commuters leave town to go to work. Yet they're proposing to bring in 1,000 jobs. How can that be if most of our people are leaving? So now we're going to have 1,000 people coming in as residents are leaving to go to work? You're, they're saying that they're going to have people in this facility, yet consider the fact that we're at the lowest unemployment that we've been in a lot in many years. What's going to happen to that facility when it's not filled up because there are no jobs? Is it going to be the white elephant just staying right there? This is going to be your legacy, as much as it is what we're going to have to live with. I hope you think really strong and hard because this is going to be political suicide for any of your political aspirations in the future, if you pass this. Because I know everyone here is going to get really up in arms. If you think this is bad, wait until you pass this. You're going to see a lot of people really angry at you. I appreciate your time.
If you mind, I just wanted to ask you one or two questions, if you don't mind. To your comment about us not doing anything, can I, could I ask you, in your opinion, what do you think we should have done at this stage?
You should have killed it. They should not even be here right now. When these people came to you and said that they wanted to have this, you should have looked at it and said, oh, my God, this is ridiculous. Look at the traffic that we have just on an ordinary day. Imagine the semi-trucks that are going to be parked and waiting to get into the distribution center. Imagine all the employees who are going to be coming here. Just the traffic alone, not to mention the pollution and all the noise. And everyone's talking, we want to be a Los Altos, not a Myscogualto industrial city.
I understand that. So my question is more around, at this preliminary stage, there will be a review of an actual application later on where it's either approved, denied, et cetera. The action will take place. But at this stage, are you, do you suggest that the commission deny a landowner his right to propose and apply for one?
Yes. But this conversation is going to be productive. Legally, a property owner has the right to apply for a permit. The city must take it in. This is a preliminary hearing. This is just the very beginning.
Morgan Hill City does not have a really good traffic.
Please, everybody in the audience, in the audience, please. Just, please, give your time.
We've headed off into a direction that's not appropriate for this venue. We need to stick to what we're here for, which is to discuss the proposed uses.
Well, in response to your comment, I'm going to just add, Morgan Hill City does not have the best track record of doing what's best for the cities. And I think a lot of us are saying enough is enough. Stop it. Because we're going to hold your feet to the fire. And we're hoping the city council hears this loud because we don't want this. Make it go away.
Thank you for your comments.
Dan Flynn? Dan Flynn? Rachel McMillan? McMillan?
Here, I think.
Michael Roberts?
It looks like we have Rachel.
Haven't you called?
Yeah. Sorry, I don't have a prepared statement, but I've lived in Morgan Hill since 1991.
Could you get a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
I've lived in Morgan Hill since 1991, and I've been coming to Morgan Hill since '75. It's changed radically. We have way too much housing, and traffic is crazy trying to get in and out of Morgan Hill. Fortunately, I have to go to, I have to be at work at 6:00 a.m., so it's really late for me. But it was important for me to be here to show my support that the thought of having some distribution center off of Cochrane, which has a very steep entrance going north, is not safe. I don't know how many of you have a Class A driver's license, but I do. I've driven big trucks. People are not safe around them. They do crazy things. We have a high school right next to this distribution center. And the thought of having high school students getting on the freeway, on and off with the possibly 400 trucks getting on and off the freeway is just mind-boggling. Those are, these are our children. And yet, the thought of putting them in jeopardy, and not to mention all this pollution that's going to come off of all those trucks right next to the track of the high school, it just doesn't make any sense. And hopefully, you'll all show sense and will not allow this to go through because this is just, as many people have said, this is not Morgan Hill. These people are going to come in. They're going to make a boatload of money. They could care less about what they leave behind. And yet, we're all residents here, and we just shouldn't allow for them to come in, make money, and leave. None, just, none of it makes sense. I lived next to a city councilman for 23 years, and I don't know, you know, what he got out of it. I know he did work hard. He did a lot of reading. But, so that's great, you know? At least he was aware of what he was looking at and voting on. But he also, because of the neighborhood, he didn't get asked to be brought back by the city, by the citizens of Morgan Hill because he voted on a lot of stuff that we basically didn't want. And I'm asking you guys to be sensitive and listen to us, not let them make money, say, "See ya," and leave us with, you know, just a really, not a positive development for us. So be kind. We're, I think we're all kind of begging you not to let this happen.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Michael Roberts? Mar?
Bush?
Bushman?
Max Bushman?
Max Bushman?
Sorry for my, for handwriting.
Jenna, you're getting better and better at this.
Hello, my name's, I'm Max Bushman. And I also would like to support the fact that we shouldn't allow this to become a distribution center. 10 to 12 loading docks should be great. If this is going to be truly a, a high-technology park. And, but their suggestion that to get financing requires to have that option of a techno, of a loading or a distribution center seems, I would suggest that you consider that bogus. There have been lots and lots and lots of technology parks that have gotten financing from the financial markets. I work in financing, but not this specifically. And I think that any investor or lender would be happy to have them committed to what they have already admitted is that the better rents is from the high technology and not from the distribution centers. And by their own admission also, they were patient in another project that allowed them to get those kind of rents, and that paid off for them. So therefore, for them to say that they've got to have the option of a, of a distribution center to get financing seems bogus to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Natasha West?
I can see we're all getting a little fatigued here, so this is going to be short and sweet. First of all, when that, that drawing of the, of the center, the technology center, was flashed on the screen with the 10-foot-high walls, I said, my God, it looks like a prison. I am against any change in zoning, especially changing the definition of small and large warehouse. I do have some pretty up-to-date research done on the impact of distribution centers in California on surrounding communities. And the conclusion was that no distribution center should be built near a school, housing, or a medical center. So I'd be glad to get you the article. I gave it to Jennifer, I think, in May, but I don't know. They ever made copies of it. She maybe can give you a copy of this. Also, we were talking about the trucks. Well, I was startled to read the other day that 80% of the methane gas in California that's emitted into our environment, and it's more toxic than CO2, is emitted by large diesel trucks. So that was an interesting one. Also, the idea of a 90-foot surveillance tower overlooking Morgan Hill, who is going to lease this tower? The CIA? The NFA? Facebook? Google? Amazon? I think we've been surveyed enough. is right on. Because right now, in the state of California, and most of the distribution centers are in the Central Valley, where a lot of poor people live, the average wage for a distribution center worker is $12.69 an hour. And even more startling is that the average amount of time a worker is at a distribution job is one year or less. So that kind of gives you an idea of the quality of the jobs. And certainly, people that live in Morgan Hill are not going to be working at that kind of a job. So I agree with all the people that have spoken here against this. And I just want to end by saying, let's put the people of Morgan Hill above the profits of international and global hedge, real estate hedge funds, of which Trammell Crowe is an adjunct, to the largest, if you want to look it up, the largest real estate investment fund in the world. So people over profits. Thank you.[676.93][676.93][applause]
Houston.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Hussein Ali. I moved here with my wife in 2016. We moved from Los Altos, because Los Altos became very crowded. And we said, "We're going to go to Morgan Hill. This is where we're going to land." Now, three, or maybe two months ago, we always go to Andy's, Andy's Orchard, it's a great place. We saw this big sign, "Technology Center."
Can I, sorry, can I ask you, please, stay closer to the mic, yeah?
We saw this big sign, "Technology Center." And I said, "Great." I said, "Yeah, you know, I am in high-tech. Look, high-tech company will move here, I don't have to commute. I don't have to deal with the traffic." And then I received this flyer in the mail that it is not really a technology center. It is a distribution center. So first step for the commissioner, please change the sign.[754.43][754.43][laughter] The sign that's posted around this land that says "Technology Center," say "Distribution Center." Let's be transparent. Okay? Once you guys knew that the plan is distribution center, you should have told everybody, "Don't leave the sign that says 'Technology Center,' because I bet you, the people who haven't received the flyer and drive by the sign, it is a technology center. This is what it is for them." So one action you guys should do is, maybe tomorrow, change the sign.[797.93][797.93][laughter] Okay? Let everybody know that the developer wants to put a distribution center. Okay? This is my recommendation to you. Now, the other thing that I want to tell everybody, this is how bad it is. When my wife knew that it is a distribution center, you know what was her reaction? Please don't tell anybody, our friends.[828.32][828.32][laughter] We have friends that lives in Silicon Valley. Please, don't tell anybody of our friends that we're going to have a distribution center next door. I live in Ade County. Okay? This is how bad it is. Now, you change the zoning, you know what's going to go next? My beloved space, Andy's Orchard. You're going to go and move into Andy's Orchard. You're going to change, take all the streets out, and put a distribution center. If this is what you want to do, thank you very much. Thank you.[869.13][869.13][applause]
Christopher.
Jenna, after Christopher, how many more cards do we have? Just to get an idea.
Three.
Two more? Okay.
Jordan Christopher.
Thank you for your time. My name's Eve Marie Bay. I've been a resident of Morgan Hill for five years, and ongoing, five and a half. I live near Nordstrom School, between Dunn and Cochrane. So first, I don't want to repeat what everybody else said. Obviously, having a warehousing and distribution center is not a good idea. My mom lives in Oxnard, California. If you want to know what that's like, to go into a community that has a lot of those, it's also an agricultural community. I suggest you take a trip to Oxnard and see what that's like to drive down Highway 1, which is one of their main roads, which is filled with distribution centers and warehousing. The roads all cut up, you're always dealing with semi trucks. I think people have spoken very eloquently about the cost to our health in terms of air quality. When I heard about this potential proposal, which I agree with everybody else, do not change the zoning. My husband has asthma, and I'm really worried about his health. One of the reasons we moved to Morgan Hill was because the air quality here is better than in most places in the Santa Clara Valley. You can smell it when you drive up 101 and start to get into, the closer to the bay, to San Jose, you can smell the smog. So one of the reasons we moved here was for the air quality. In addition, what I haven't heard anybody speak in great length about, we've talked about the increased traffic. Well, the traffic that we have now is already not supportable. I mean, my friends that live in up the peninsula off 280 and 85, nobody will come here after 2:00, you know? And we have no mass transit. I realize that the tracks, when I ask why there are no CalTrains that come farther, that the tracks are leased from the freight company. So we have this very crappy, insufficient mass transit system. I talked to people who said that they grew up in Morgan Hill, their jobs are, and these are people of all different types of jobs, not all high-tech workers, that one of the reasons they moved away from Morgan Hill was because they couldn't, they just couldn't handle it. So I haven't really seen anything, any plans. So even if this whole thing were to happen, and you were to approve the zoning changes, and this were to happen, I just don't know how anybody could manage commuting of the workers that you have. So I suggest that there would be a pretty severe impact. So I also agree with other people. My intelligence is offended by the proposal. You know, let's just be transparent, let's be real, let's talk about what they're asking. And so I request that you also deny the zoning changes, and that you do not have any changes to the existing plan record. Thank you.
Thank you.[1077.93][1077.93][applause]
Adam Christopher.
Hi, it goes higher, right? Okay. So I'm Tad and Christopher. I'm not here to speak for Christopher Ranch, but of Christopher Ranch. One of the largest garlic shipping companies in the area. You guys all know who they are. We have five docks, and we ship over the entire United States with five docks. We get through about 30 to 40 trucks a day on regular shift. That's not running three shifts, that's not 24-hour shifts, that's just one daily shift. So if you go by those numbers, we're looking at 1,000 to 1,500 trucks a day with regular shifts. That's not overnight robots, that's not working 16-hour shifts in a row, that's just one day. That's a pretty insane amount of trucks coming into and out of Morgan Hill. I understand that, you know, as you add more and more trucks, it gets more difficult to accomplish the task, but it's, there is no need for that. Even if we have the promise of Amazon Fresh coming in, which would be awesome, because we are a family community, and we would love to sell our mushrooms to the rest of the United States, we still would not use that many trucks. Even if you got all the in Morgan Hill, all of the food produced in Morgan Hill, even if you doubled, tripled, quadrupled it, we still would not fill that many trucks in a day. So I don't know who's going to come in to take up that resource, but it's just not there. And so if you have someone coming in saying, "Well, we're going to build it, and they're going to come," then you should expect to see a bunch of ghost baseball players.[1178.32][1178.32][laughter] Other things that I kind of noticed that were really concerning, we deal with cold storage a lot, and we deal with agricultural storage a lot. Our number-one problem is contamination. If we put garlic in one area, we can't then put ginger in that area. So you're going to build this massive warehouse, you're going to put something in there that needs to go into cold storage, you're going to fill it up with ammonia, you're going to take it out, and now no one can use that location. Cold storage needs to be separated from where you're storing everything else. That's why large storage facilities don't work for agriculture. You need smaller storage facilities on-site with where the agricultural is being produced. You guys also asked for ideas of what we could do in this area. I noticed they had one plan. I'm used to seeing three plans, right? Well, we're going to build some houses here, and we're going to build some houses here, or we could build high-density housing here and really expensive housing over here. There's only one plan. So where's Plan B? Where's Plan C? Where's the plan that has no distribution center? They can make one of those. And they made a great plan, their building looked beautiful. I think it looked beautiful. They can do that, and so I understand why they're not up here today with more than one plan. In terms of other ideas, I hate PG&E, so I would love to build, and I'll try to run through these real quick, a water-sword complex, just to, you know, get rid of them. We could definitely go with hydroponic farming. We are an ag industry, that would be a great location to do it. It's very contained, it's non-toxic. We could put in biofuel facilities. I know up at Stanford, they have an HLA lab that needs to expand. We could put an HLA lab here, just so you know that that's organ transplant testing, there's two in the nation, right? Stanford is the one that heads it, we're right next to them. We could put a medical supply, just like Pirelli. We could expand that industry. We could build more barrels. We've been building barrels for 33 years, because that's how long I've lived here. There's a lot of options for what we could do with this property, and right now, we're only looking at one plan. Please don't make a decision with one plan. Get other plans, get other groups to come in, give them more ideas. We need to work with them, not be super mad at them, but at the same time, we need to have more than just, "Here, distribution center, chuck, go, we're done." Thank you.
Thank you.[1327.82][1327.82][applause]
Julie Hutchinson.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners. My name is Julie Hutchinson, and for those who know me, I'm here as a resident this evening. I didn't plan on making public comment, but I thought I had a little bit of perspective to offer as a member of the General Plan Task Force. Bear with me, I don't have my glasses on, it's late, and I'm going to have a hard time reading the little bit of notes I've put together. So yes, I did serve on the General Plan Task Force, and the members of the task force carefully deliberated on the land use designations that we recommended for the general plan update. Commercial for this site, in my mind, would I remember our discussions to be around, was something that would be locally serving. In other words, serve the community near and around it. So the other part of this is, when people buy a property, they have to look to what could possibly be built around them, to understand their home value and its future value. And you look to the general plan and the zoning amendment, the zoning for that. This is what, you know, people rely on. When amendments change that, as is the case potentially here, it sows distrust in the community, and it sows distrust in what serves as our land use constitution here in the As someone who has a day job dealing with land use issues and the environment, I'm always rather leery of zoning amendments and general plan amendments, because they break with, as I've mentioned before, the thoughtful and agreed-upon work that goes into this community growth blueprint. With regards to a distribution center and a jobs-housing imbalance, the Panatomi Development Company, if you'd heard of that, a few years back, proposed a 517,000-square-foot warehouse, that's nine football fields, and about nine truck trips a day. This would have been in Coyote Valley. San Jose is very sensitive towards a jobs-housing imbalance. It's also very sensitive to keeping its industrial land. Despite that, though, the community really pushed back, because they understood how it would affect their quality of life and how it would only offer low-paying jobs. With regards to community benefits, perhaps I'm misunderstanding, but there's a reference to agriculture in open space. This is mitigation. If they're talking about the agricultural mitigation, this is just part and parcel of what would need to be done. I would suggest, if any project goes through, you also consider how it affected agriculture just on the border of Morgan Hill. Mr. Fry owns property just beside, I know money, Mr. Fry owns property just beside his Fry's Golf Course. Stephen Fry had a 32-acre lease with them, but because Mr. Fry had to move his nursery, he clawed back 16 acres of that. So it has affected actually real agricultural production in the county. And just finally, around community engagement, and this has been talked about, and there's obviously a lot of thoughtfulness here in this room about what could be there. If Trammell Crowe is serious about putting down a project that's a good fit for the community, I strongly encourage them to pause and hold community meetings where they are truly listening to the community and working toward a win-win situation, where the community is going to benefit from this project, and see what they would like to see in their community. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.[1573.01][1573.01][applause]
Brian Esperland.
Hello, fellow citizens of Morgan Hill, planning commissioners. I'd just like to allude to the fact that a lot of the stuff that's going on right now is a lot of distrust, right? The fact is, October 8th, I went to the website for the Morgan Hill Technology Center, or whatever it is, right? I looked it up on Building 3, right? One of the elevations plans has, lo and behold, a truck. Okay? A truck. Jennifer's...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Jennifer's, what the heck is this? Presentation, didn't have the truck. So where'd the truck go? Right? Next. There's another one, another building, right? You guys, this comes from HPA, right? Trammell Crowe's Architects. They try to hide trucks behind a look-alike Maserati. Another one. You guys have on your slides, slide deck, right? Caption D. It's there somewhere, believe me. A truck dolly. Right? It was not shown by, or alluded to the fact, by anybody from the team, from Trammell, from Jennifer, or whatever. So what is that truck dolly supposed to do? Right? I'm an engineer, I'm not a planning commissioner, but if it pulls a truck, then it's a truck. Okay?
Pulls a trailer.
And then, there's a proposed location for cellular hosting structure, right? 35, I guess, so say, for example, you guys, their building's 55 feet, right? At the last numbers, right? And the structure is... Jennifer's...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Jennifer's, what the heck is this? Presentation, didn't have the truck. So where'd the truck go? Right? Next. There's another one, another building, right? You guys, this comes from HPA, right? Trammel Crow's architects. They try to hide trucks behind a look-alike Maserati. Okay? Another one. You guys have on your slides, slide deck, right? Caption D. It's there somewhere, believe me. A truck dolly. Right? It was not shown by, or alluded to the fact, by anybody from the team, from Trammel, from Jennifer, or whatever. So what is that truck dolly supposed to do, right? I'm an engineer, I'm not a planning commissioner, but if it pulls a truck, then it's a truck. Okay? And then, there's a proposed location for cellular hosting structure, right? 35, I guess, so say, for example, you guys, their building's 55 feet. Right? At the last numbers, right? And the structure is supposed to be 90 feet. So you look it up, it's pretty easy. A CB radio, which all of us know is used for communications between trucks, has to be between 25 to 35 feet, or 40 feet, above the highest structure of a building. So please, don't give me this snake oil concoction that Trammel's giving you, right? I don't know what kind of Cheerios they're giving you, whatever it is, right? But whatever it is, it's not a cell structure. Look it up, it's pretty easy. 55 minus 35 is what? The magic number? 90. Thank you.
John Fajardo?
Hello, my name's John Fajardo. I've been in Morgan Hill since 1976. I was seven years old when I moved here. Population 12,000. Now, I think, pushing over 50 easily. And I've seen a lot of changes in this town. But thank you for the time today. I usually don't come to these, but this one really, really hit me hard. And I'm a supply chain executive in Silicon Valley, and I've been in China, Indonesia, Taiwan, Mexico, and I've seen distribution centers. And this is a distribution center. And they will find a way to use it as a distribution center if the bays are built. That's the job. And when you get talented people to be hired, that is their job to find ways to use those bays. And the ways to use those bays is you get trucks in and out. I was even at the Apple facility at Foxconn in China. 200,000 employees, probably 1,000 bays, and a million phones a day. Not saying that that's going to happen here, but advanced manufacturing, you gotta be very careful when you hear advanced manufacturing, because it's very deceiving, because you can have advanced manufacturing take up 100,000 square feet, and you can have the distribution of that advanced manufacturing, and the results of the advanced manufacturing taking up 500,000 to 600,000 square feet. And I deal right now with companies in Phoenix, Arizona, that have that. About 100,000 square feet in advanced manufacturing, and 500,000 feet of the results of that manufacturing to distribute. So it gives you an idea of what could happen. So when the bays are built, they're going to use them. I think that the bottom line on this is, the city council and the commission here has to decide, what kind of town do we want? I moved here in '76 with my parents, I was seven years old. But I love this town, I've been back and forth, and I'm back here again. I moved from Fremont here exactly for this reason. Distribution. Distribution started to kill Fremont, so I came down here. So the small, little quaint town in Morgan Hill that we love, that I grew up with, that had a small downtown with the Granada Theater, has changed. But it can still stay somewhat quaint and somewhat away from the Bay Area. I think all of us can say that we came down here as a choice. The commute sucks, we understand that. But we came down there and we made that choice, that the commute sucks. But when everybody asks me, "John, why Morgan Hill? Why an hour and a half to get here, an hour and 20 minutes?" Because I want to get away from Silicon Valley, just for the weekend. That's what's important to me. And when we start adding distribution here, we're going to turn into another Fremont and another Union City. That's what I don't want. So please reconsider ending this project. Thank you.
Dan Maderas?
My name's Dan Maderas, and I've lived very near the corner of East Main Avenue and Hill Road for over 30 years. I've never attended a city council meeting, and I will say that I was really impressed with you guys' questions to the applicant. But just a quick comment on trucks. There's a lot of talk tonight about trucks, and often, fairly often, very late at night, I hear trucks come around the corner, East Main and Hill. Some guesswork. I tell myself they're avoiding the scales down on the freeway, and they're getting over to the Hecker Pass, whatever. That's surmising on my part. But the point is, that if we're talking about the possibility of this many trucks around, that they may not all be on the freeways, that they might be coming through the roads of our little town. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you.
Final call for Michael Roberts. And Dan Flynn.
Okay, that's all the speaker cards we have. Seeing nobody urging to speak. Do you like to speak? That's fine. Do you mind filling one out after you speak? Is that okay?
No, I don't want to. It's okay. Thank you. My name is Esperlin. I think that, you know, a lot of times, we, I love the community today. I mean, there's a lot of folks here that are telling you that this is not what we want. And I think that part of the commission and your work is to hear what the community has to say. And we're telling you that we don't want this distribution center. There's a lot of things that, the council, we voted for them. And we're telling you and the council members that we don't want this distribution center in our community. Now, mind you, that a lot of folks here, and developers, and folks that make money out of all of these things, they're free to do that. But at the same time, we as a community are free to say no. And we don't want this. And I tell you this right now, that there's a lot of folks here, and the community does not want this. You have to listen to the community, because at the end of the day, you actually like, we voted you in, we told you, we said, you told us what you guys wanted for this community, and we believed you. We believe the council members want the best for our community and for our children in this community. I didn't move here just so that I could have a lot of people around me, a lot of cars around me, all of these things. And I think that a lot of us live here because we want to live here and we want to commute out and get our, you know, we want to work outside of the city, but we love our community. And I hate all the traffic that I get, even on the weekends nowadays. So I think that it's incumbent upon you to do what we're asking you to do. And we're asking you to turn this project down. And if you don't, that's okay. But I think that we're going to have to take action as a community to stop this project from happening nonetheless. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think with that, what we'll do, oh, there it is. What we'll do is, we'll go ahead and close public comment for now. I would very much appreciate about a three-minute break, so we can all use the restroom and then come back for our discussion. Let's go ahead and just do a quick break then. We'll be back at 10:46 PM. Slowly make our way back to your seats, maybe wrap up your conversations. Commissioners, if you could all kind of join me back up here. I think we're missing still a few that might be coming back from the restroom. While we wait for the remaining commissioners, I have a quick question for city staff. We'll talk about, we'll talk about time constraints in just a second when we have the full day as well. But as per protocol, would the next step be to reopen it to the applicant for any additional comments they might have? Or should we wait that till after our discussion? Is there...
Yeah, per the rules, the applicant can come up if they would like and comment.
Commissioners, before we kind of decide on a course, well, before we embark in a course of action here, we have a vision to make. So tonight's meeting initially was set to end by 11:00 PM because of some time constraints. However, that being said, we have two choices tonight. We can either vote to continue the conversation now and engage in our discussion and provide feedback, or, should we want to be mindful of time, we can vote to continue this until a later hearing, for which, do we have a date, a specific date, if we were to choose that out?
We have space on next week's agenda. Should the commission want to take time to have that discussion then? We have one item on the agenda next week already, but we certainly can continue. If that was the case, or we can continue to a different date.
So the choices are to either continue tonight with the understanding that some staff may need to excuse themselves just because of some time constraints, or we can vote to continue this either to next meeting or to a later date. So should we just put it to a vote? Does anybody have any comments?
I'm in favor of continuing for now, I don't have a whole lot to say.
Okay, so let's just make it simple. So all in favor of continuing the discussion now, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody in favor of continuing it later? Sounds like we're all in agreement to continue now. Commissioners, next question.
Could you clarify that? Is the purpose of us continuing it now is to reach a resolution? Or do you really think that an hour and a half from now, we're going to continue to another date?
Well, we have been tasked with providing feedback, and we do not have to arrive at any one conclusion tonight, nor any other night. We're simply just asked, correct me if I'm wrong, to provide feedback for both city staff as they embark in their process, as well as the applicant, so that they can take into consideration not just public comment, but also comments from the commission. So I don't think there's a yea or nay outcome that'll come out of tonight or any other night.
Do you anticipate any time that we would conclude our discussion tonight? Because I don't really see us reaching completion tonight about our discussion, unless we really go late. So what, I actually thought, my vote for continuing was to actually continue it to next week, not to attempt to continue it and complete it tonight. I believe we're still going to roll it over into another meeting, so...
I don't think I could provide an accurate estimate as to how long this might take. Obviously, there's a lot to be discussed.
That's right.
So just to make clear then, Chair, so I thought the intent was, we're just providing feedback, right?
Yes.
So my plan, I'm saying continue, was my feedback's going to be fairly concise, so... Just to speak for myself, right? I don't plan on spending another an hour and a half debating it here. I'm going to give my feedback, which is only feedback, right?
That's precisely why I asked for a vote, because I know that some people might want to continue now, some people might not. So it seems like a majority of us want to continue, so I think probably in the interest of time, we can just kind of dive into that. Wayne, to your point, should it get to a point in the evening where the conversation is unproductive, we can consider that again. Would that be fair?
Well, I guess I'm a little concerned about all those citizens that come here, and it's a little bit of a strange dilemma, right? We could go another half hour or 45 minutes or an hour, it'd be close to midnight. All these people out here that have spent the time here have to get up and go to work in the morning.
So do I.
Right?
Yeah, so do we.
Some of us, right? And I'm a little concerned about that, right? As the hour gets later, it's hard for us to give concise statements into it. But to have people come back next week and be on the first one on the agenda is still an inconvenience.
Right.
Right? But I think it might be more productive, right? One, we'd have a little bit of time to digest everything we've heard, so we might give better feedback, right? And on top, we'd be in earlier time, so...
Okay, so it sounds like we may need to vote again. I understand your point, Joe. To your specific point, I would say that if I were in the audience tonight and I just sat here for close to four hours, I may want to see some discussion. But I don't want to speak on behalf of anybody. I understand that there's... I understand that there's pros and cons to both scenarios, which is why I think perhaps a hybrid version, where we at least get started in an effort to, to get through as much as possible, and if needed, we can continue. But again, we can put it, we'll put it to a, to a second vote, and we'll just let, we'll let the vote settle, is that okay?
Yeah, before you, so before you vote, is this on or off? I'm of the same opinion, which is, I think those people who've sat here for four hours, I think they're expecting some...
Something.
...sort of a summary. If, if the net result of that is, we didn't conclude and we have to continue this week, that's fine. I think it's quite inconvenient to ask a lot of these people to come back again next week. But that's just my, but at the same time, I don't want to be here until 1:00 in the morning either. So, I was planning to be, for me, I think I'll be done in five or 10 minutes here, so...
That's fine. So let's, we'll, we'll just do another quick vote, just, I just want to be very clear about this.
To, to just add to that, though, more than half of the people who were here are now gone. And that may not be fair to them either, that if we hold it over to another meeting, they have the opportunity to attend, or watch it on TV live.
This one, right? And it's, I mean, it's, it's being live streamed, and they can watch it later as well, so...
They can watch the tape, that's very true.
But they could also participate. Some that left could participate.
All right, well, since, since we're not spending most of our time debating whether or not, I think we...
You can watch Jimmy Fallon, you can watch us, I think you can watch us.
All right, let's, let's just, let's just focus on the task at hand, and let's just put it to a final vote, and we'll let the vote decide, yeah? So those in favor of continuing the conversation right now, tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor of waiting, postponing it until next week or a later date, say aye.
Aye.
But I would only postpone it to next week.
Yeah, I agree.
With comments. You're only postponing it till next week. We make it very clear that, I know, we have heard clearly from the residents who were here, all of their sentiments, and I don't think we have to, you know, repeat that, but it was very, you know, points very well made, and completely documented. I don't want you to think that we haven't heard, but I do think it will be better if we can come refreshed, and be more thoughtful ourselves, potentially.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would second those comments made by Commissioner Escoto. She's very well said, most of the things I wanted to state. And the other thing I wanted to add is, it gives us, or at least me personally, I've taken extensive notes of each individual that came up, and it gives us more process to research each individual comment, and make sure it's addressed, hopefully, at the next meeting. And I agree, the next meeting, should it happen, at most, should be next week.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing?
Please.
That, I would like you to consider opening up the public hearing, so that the applicant can respond to the assortment of concerns that we heard multiple times tonight out of the 25 or seven speakers. There was a resounding theme on a number of things, and I'd like to just give them the opportunity to respond.
Yeah, I think we can do that. Before we do that, since we now have, I think it's a five to two decision to postpone this conversation, I just kind of want to, looking out at the audience here, and just kind of, you're looking for nodding heads, or, you know, raise your hands, is, is that something that you feel is fair, given tonight, the length of tonight, and the discussion we've had so far? Is everybody okay with that, and you feel like you've had your fair chance to speak? Okay, so we have one person. Now, is he, other nodding heads for being okay with postponing to next week? Okay. So with that in mind, what we'll do then is we'll reopen the public comment period to allow the applicant to, if they wish, to provide any final comments, and after that, we'll start our adjourning process. So, so, yeah, one more comment?
Before the, yeah, I would like the applicant to come up for a few minutes and maybe address some of the commentary, but can I make a comment?
It's up to them, they can choose to or not to.
I understand, but if they do, can I just pose a question before they come up, so they can address it too, which is, all I want to say is, first of all, thanks to everybody for participating, I know it's been a long night, but what I'm interested to hear from the, from the applicant, which might be good to sum up here in a few minutes, is, I'm completely perplexed, because I'm hearing from the applicant a completely different story than what everybody else believes here that came tonight, completely conflicting stories. And I'd like the applicant to address that if he could, from the perspective of, what's really the plan here? Because I think that will help me advise as well, next week.
I think it's fair to say that that's a concern, it's probably on the radar at this point. So, final comment before we send it to the applicant?
Well, I, I think that rather than open that up, because it will open up another series of conversations, I would prefer that we stay with the five-two vote that we...
We are going to stay with a five-two vote, but per the due process that we have for the meeting, the applicant has the right to have a final comment.
At this point?
So, I would like to honor that, as long as everybody, everybody's okay. Yeah, I just want to be, I just want to do by things by the book.
Project, the project applicant may provide rebuttal, it doesn't have to be tonight, you're continuing the public hearing, so it can be, occur at the other, the other meeting as well.
Okay. Curveballs, curveballs. So, are we gonna, is everybody then in favor of just waiting, or do you still want to hear from the applicant? I would much...
I'd like to advocate for waiting, rather than a needed response to comments made tonight from the applicant, to give them time to think it through, where they really want to go, and come back with a position that they could articulate very well.
And a cup of coffee.
Yeah.
Could I also recommend that it be the first item on the agenda next week?
Okay. So it sounds like we are looking for a motion to continue this item until next week, and make it the first item in the agenda for the 22nd?
Motion to continue to the 22nd, and request that it be the first item up.
Great, we have a motion, do we have a second there? We have a second there. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Looks like it passed. Thank you very much, we'll continue this item until the next meeting. Before we adjourn properly for the evening, city is, staff, is there any comments, announcements, reports that we need to receive prior to adjourning?
No, there are not.
Excellent. Well, with that, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming out, especially those of you who commented. Thank you very much, good night.